Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 19th, 2013. I welcome all of you here tonight. For those of you that haven't been here in the last two weeks, we don't have the same printed staff reports and agendas that we have had in the past. If you're looking at the empty slots on the wall, but we do have everything electronically available to you, and we do have a hard copy here if necessary to follow along. But a reminder to please silence your phones so that we can hold our meeting without undue interruption. But welcome to all of you. I will call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Hall is excused.
And I am making sure that my phone is silenced. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a closed session report. I don't think we're going to have one since we didn't have a session, did we?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of tonight's agenda, and I'm going to anticipate the request to pull item 7D from our consent calendar, so I'm just going to go ahead and ask that we do that. We will have a separate discussion about that item 7D. Are there any other changes or corrections to tonight's agenda? If not, is there a motion to?
So moved?
The amended agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Next up is public comment, and this is the time when, if there's any item that you'd like to address the council about that's not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. I'll just remind folks that I know we have some people here interested in item 7D. We will be discussing that in just a few minutes, so now would not be the time. But if there's anything else that anyone would like to come up and bring up right now, feel free. Seeing no one come up, we'll move right ahead to our consent calendar. So we have consent calendar items A, B, C, E, and F for consideration. Any discussion or action?
Move to approve, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, item 7D is the issue of approving plans and specifications and authorizing a solicitation of bids for the accessibility improvements and sidewalk replacement project as listed. And what I will do is ask if staff has any comments first to provide, and then we'll all invite the public to share their concerns as well. Graham?
Deputy Mayor Dunbar, council. This project is from our accessibility plan. The town hired Coastland Civil Engineering to go and check different facilities around town for compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act. This can include, you know, ramps to buildings, or ramps at curb returns and sidewalks and town streets, could be in the restrooms, we're looking at that as well. So, what we've done is did an RFP, request for proposal, hired a consultant, has put together plans and specifications, which are 90 percent designed at this point, and are bringing them to you for approval tonight. The major project is in the Washington Park subdivision. So after the slurry seal project last year, it was pointed out that a lot of people are using the shoulders, not just for parking, but also for walking through the neighborhood. So without having the curb ramps at the corners of the intersections, people were having difficulty getting up and down off of the shoulder. Now, you can still walk in the street, it was a narrow street design in the original design of the subdivision, so it was anticipated that people would be walking in the street because people would be parking on the sidewalks. But we've seen a lot of people walking through that neighborhood. The other part of this project is sidewalk improvements. Last year, we had done the reconstruction of the sidewalk on the west side of Washington from Mulberry up towards Yount, and so this will be continuation up to the driveway to V Marketplace, that'll be wider sidewalk. Also, as part of our sidewalk management program, we've gone around town, identified locations where sidewalks have been uplifted by trees, and so again, this year, we're going out and removing and replacing sidewalks that have been uplifted that are not able to be ground down any longer. So that's sort of in a nutshell what's happening with this project. If the town council approves this, we would advertise for bids and then bring back the project with the lowest responsible bidder to you for award. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Graham, and I'll expand on a few things in particular, because as Graham noted, this particular project is, actually consists of a number of projects in various locations. There is one significant area that is generating more interest, and that is in the Washington Park neighborhood. The town tried, in effect, to try to be, reach out to some folks, and I think in some cases, while we tried really hard to let them know what we were doing, in some cases, our communication may have failed in the fact that it didn't reach. So I do want to try to address a couple of things when we talk about what are some of the safety and pedestrian concern issues in the Washington Park neighborhood. One, just a refresher in history, because many of the residents may not have been the original residents or purchased the property. That neighborhood was originally developed without rolled curbs and the paved sidewalk parking areas. Those areas were actually, as part of the original approvals, put in with a DG and gravel very similar to Old Town. Because one of the most often asked questions is, why the blank do we have to comply with ADA? You know, they don't in Old Town. And the short answer is, you didn't originally, and the town didn't originally when it was in the condition and maintained like Old Town. However, in the late 1990s, the Washington Park residents at that time came to the town and said, "We don't really like all of the DG and gravel that we're tracking into our new houses, and we want something different." And at that point in time, the town participated, along with the developer, in the, at that point, was a solution that included a rolled asphalt curb with basically filling in the easements there, that are the pathway easements that had been gravel and DG with asphalt. The real issue is pedestrian safety first and foremost. On top of that, there's also the issue that related to our slurry seal project. We haven't had the most successful slurry seal project. The town's been working with a number of residents that have been very helpful in sharing that, we know that. We've attempted to work on some stuff. We have also, on two different occasions, brought out industry experts to work with us to see what recourse beyond some warranty work we potentially could have with our contractor, because we really were not happy. So, two things. One, we're changing our standards and our specifications and approach to slurry seal because slurry seal is actually a very cost-effective and necessary approach. Having said that, we're going to be using a technique that is a heavier application and will require a rolled application. Crack sealing is just that, crack sealing, it does not make the cracks go away, and unfortunately, just like when anybody freshly coats a paint, a wall at home, all of the imperfections are actually much more noticeable until they weather out. And crack sealing and slurry sealing, in a practical sense, is really no different than it comes to asphalt maintenance. The other challenge that we're faced is, the slurry seal brought something completely unintended that I don't think anybody saw, which was a number of concerns and calls from residents about the rolled curb and the depth perception, where people weren't, they weren't able to discern the height difference between street and curb, because it all looked uniformly black. Now, what's interesting is, not everybody agrees with that, and the condition was very similar to that for many number of years before, but weathered. However, the reality is, the number of phone calls and complaints we've received indicates that that is an issue, that's one pedestrian safety aspect. ADA curb cuts are not something the town has a choice, we have to comply with the federal requirements for the Americans with Disability Act. So what we are attempting to do is work on placing them strategically and limiting the number. We've also worked and have reviewed the standards, and we're very pleased to report that even though the picture showed a curb cut with a day-glow yellow, as one resident told me, the truncated domes do not need to be yellow, and in this particular case, and we've communicated this to a number of residents already, we will be installing a charcoal gray, so you will have the black asphalt with a concrete ramp with the gray truncated domes to try to have the aesthetic better match the neighborhood. Now, that hopefully will address a little bit of the why we're doing it and how we're doing it, but I do know that for some folks, they would rather see us not do anything. I've heard that loud and clear from some neighbors. We've also heard from other neighbors that we're not doing enough, and that they want better pedestrian access and linkage. In my professional situation, this is what we refer to as a "we aren't going to win no matter what we do" situation, but we're going to have to do what's legal, and hopefully we're more than willing to meet with the residents and try to come up with something that is the best fit for the neighborhood.
And I'll just add one thing before I invite members of the public to address this item. There was some confusion for some folks in the outreach letter, that the town felt like the curb, or the corner cuts in these pads with the domes on them, or the solution for anything to do with the slurry seal, or the inability for some people to distinguish the difference between the rolled curb and the street. They are not, that is not the solution for that problem. What we're hoping is, in complying with the federal regulations on accessibility, that that's going to help with that problem and limit what we then have to do to deal with the visual separation of curb and roadway. We don't want to assume what visual result is going to come from the truncated domes until we actually see it out in the field. So that's basically the plan as it's presented right now, but I do invite members of the public now, since you've heard kind of the official town staff report, and town manager, if you have anything further?
Well, I just want, Mayor, if I would, I want to let everybody know, we are also talking about improvements to the pedestrian ramps along Weber and Yount and Hubbold, Washington Street and Padrone, Fennel Road and Vista. So I don't want the folks in our fine Washington Park neighborhood to think they're the only ones getting special treatment.
Fair enough. So with that, I'll open the public hearing discussion on this item and invite any members of the public that would like to comment on it to please step forward at this time. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Carla Rife, that's R-E-Y-F-F, two Fs, six and two Franks, and I'm here to testify on this issue. I was before you, oh, I don't know, three, four, five, six months ago, and was one of the complainers about the gravel all over the street, and I think I brought a little packet of gravel up to show you. I wanted to tell you that that's been taken care of. There's no longer a problem in front of my house, I know it is in front of other people's houses, but that has been taken care of, and I understand that there's something in the works here to have. I think my issue at that time was that, please don't ever use these contractors again because they really didn't do a good job, and my understanding is that that's kind of been taken care of already. You've passed an ordinance that would permit you to go, not to have to hire the same people over again if they did a poor job in the past, so thank you very much for that. The other thing is, I did a little bit of research on this issue, since I talked with our mayor and the town manager, and a very aggressive talk on my part, excuse me, not personal business, but what I had, what I came up with is just a couple of things I wanted to bring before you, and then some of the other members from Washington Park wanted to present their sides of the story. I read through the agreements and covenants of the Washington Park homeowners manual, and in that, in that manual, they refer to, quote, "parking shoulders," they refer to "decomposed granite parking shoulders." They say in this manual, quote, "The granite shoulders benefit the subdivision by providing maintained parking areas fronting many lots," end quote. And this is what part of our discussion was, are these parking areas or are they sidewalks? Well, nowhere in this report was the word sidewalk mentioned. They mentioned lights, they mentioned streets, they mentioned parking shoulders, but never mentioned the word sidewalks. And I think that was deliberate on the part of the O'Brien people when they built Washington Park for other reasons. I also wanted to note that I was living in Washington Park when it was being built, and the curved parking shoulders, as we refer to in the curve, the curvature has not changed. The only thing that changed when they had the chip seal argument or discussion before this council, and they changed the driveways, and they changed some of the pathways going to the houses, they were concreted over. The streets and the parking shoulders never changed since I've been living here, and I was living here when that was, that chip steel was still there. I also spoke with the representative from the O'Brien people, Dale DeBoucler, and he happened to testify before this group during the days when Washington Park was being approved. And he said, when I brought this up, he said, "No, no, no, there were never sidewalks in Washington Park," because the idea was to incorporate, quote, "the old town of, old town part of Yountville into the way that Washington Park would look, with their little cottages and their sort of rural little streets, no concrete sidewalks." And he said that that was part of the charm, and that also, that Forester Street in particular was designed for flood control, and that was the reason that those curves were there. And it is a flood control area, which I think we saw a few years ago actually worked, that the flood was, came around my house and up and went down Washington Street. And then because of the design and engineering features of that street, they incorporated those sloping sides into the rest of Washington Park for a look of unity throughout the park. So that was all I wanted to bring up, were those issues that I had found in my research, which I'm sure you have a lot more of that, because your council minutes have a lot more than just the few documents I have in here. And I would like to introduce Bruce Donsker, who also lives in Washington Park, and he wanted to address some other issues, if you don't have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the offer to have discussions, because we're not going to solve anything tonight, and to be able to talk more about all of this would be great. The two, the two areas that I was concerned about was possibly my inability to correctly communicate with you folks in emails over what the two concerns were that we heard a lot of. Number one of them is safety, and the idea of ADA siding, that might be great on the corners, but my problem is, I have a guest over at my house, I have to take a flashlight out with me so they don't fall in the street while they're trying to get in their car. And to me, it has gotten worse with this black on the black on the black, in terms of being able to see anything, and I question that anything I've heard so far is going to address that, so I would like to be able to discuss that more, okay? The second thing I'm concerned about is, we've all talked about the quality of the work that's taken place, and I'm 65 years old, so I remember yesterday, but I remember six months ago. So I went out today and I took some photographs, because we all started talking five or six months ago about cracks. Well, this is cracks six months ago and cracks today, okay? And they are extremely worse than they were. This degradation that is taking place is taking place at a rate that, if this keeps going, I don't know if you want them up there?
We actually, we'll pass them through staff and we'll get them up here.
And I got multiple copies of them as well. But yeah, the degrade, when you look at a photograph of where we were when we started complaining about the condition of these streets versus today, tremendously worse, tremendously worse. And this was just taken on plenty of way. And again, I'm concerned that I've not heard anything address this, and if this looks like this after six months, what's it going to look like after two years, or three years, okay? It's going very quickly, okay? So both of those issues, I'm concerned that we're not addressing, how fast the streets are falling apart, and safety in the entire neighborhood, not just the corners.
Great, thank you, thanks very much, and thank you for the, uh, different angle. And I'm just passing these along, not because I'm not looking at them, but I see the streets every day, I live there, so.
Remember what it was like six months ago versus today?
Yes, so, no, I appreciate that, so thank you. Yes.
I'm Billy Hewitt, at Nine Landy Way, corner of Landy and Redwood, which will have curb cuts right outside my front door, and I understand, and thank you for even researching that there could be another color besides that bright yellow. I concur with what Bruce has said, in considering the safety of our everyday residents and our guests. I understand about the ADA, I understand it needs to be done, because somehow we all of a sudden developed sidewalks and curbs, but I would sort of encourage this body to ask for some sort of delineation first and foremost, to protect the everyday citizen and guests, so Bruce doesn't have to use his flashlight all the time, and Steve and Kim don't have to worry about getting their guests to the car without falling. We have had some falls, I know you're all aware of those, and I would hate to see any other. I'm not opposing the ADA, I mean, I do oppose it, but I'm not saying that, don't do it, I'm just asking you to do the delineation first, or is there a time during which you have to do the ADA? Can the delineation be done first?
Let's save all your questions, we'll, I'm writing them down, I'm sure town manager's writing them down.
That's my question for you, is the order in which it's done. I think a lot of us doubt that the ADA is going to, the ADA cuts are going to solve the problem of the lack of demarcation there.
And they're not meant to, but we'll address that in a little more detail. I just wanted to give you a chance to continue if you had any other.
Thank you, that's the main thing. And we have several neighbors who are concurring with Bruce's email, which Bruce will then get to you, Michelle. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And we will address questions in just a minute, we'll just collect all the questions and then we'll respond. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak, or if your opinion has already been addressed, and we'll be able to touch on that? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other members of the public, I'll close that public comment part of this item. One thing I did want to just clarify, Billy, your last comment, and I tried to address it in my preliminary remarks on this item, the concern about the lack of contrast between the rolled curb and the street is not meant to be solved by the corner cuts. What we were talking about doing is, we can potentially reduce how much might be needed to contrast if we already have some contrast created by the curb, the corner cuts. We have a few different recommendations from professionals in the industry about a, like a fog line, basically a reflective white strip that would go continuously around the curb, all the way around the neighborhood, and I'm sure we'll have a different set of people in here complaining that now we've candy striped the entire neighborhood, but some folks will feel safer about that. So I think that's where the town manager's point of, you know, fix one problem and create another, we're in a bit of that dilemma, so there are, maybe, I don't know, Steve, if you can speak to, is there a priority, is there a specific timeframe for the ADA compliance?
Well, I think one has to look at the potential, and first, staff does recognize that there are three distinct issues, so we apologize for any lack of clarity, because we are addressing all three. And the ADA project is tied into the town's master ADA curb accessibility, so from that standpoint, that needs to move forward from that timeline. But we are, I think, looking at, there's approximately three techniques that have been identified to potentially deal with the rolled curb depth delineation issue, for lack of a, how to give it a big name. But I think what we could look at doing is some demonstrations, and then kind of assessing how the community, and again, we did want to put the curb cuts in because it will give us some visual contrast, but what we are potentially looking at would be, one, curb cuts in the status quo, some people think that's sufficient, we've heard tonight that not everybody agrees with that. One possibility is the fog line, as the mayor referred to. Another possibility are reflectors placed in the actual roll of the curb, not on the top, because that would be a trip hazard, much like you see some of the dots. Those would be placed in the curb approximately every 10 or 12 feet, we need to look at some guidelines. So staff's of the opinion was to try to work on getting the ADA curb cuts in, and then maybe do a demonstration section of each of what reflectors would look like, and what a paint stripe would look like, and then we might be able to do a better canvassing of the neighborhood and see what the opinions of the neighborhood are. And that's the strategy that staff would suggest for dealing with that issue. And I do need to point out that that issue is distinctly different than the ADA issue, and the earlier speaker answered part of the question, because the reference she referred to was the DG, and once the DG was replaced in their shoulder, it fundamentally changed that. So those are how I would look at that proceeding. We try to do a master contract because it's more cost-effective for the town, both in terms of project management, and unfortunately, once we have identified the issue of this level, we really are, we do need to fix the ADA. There are professional ADA litigants that do nothing but go around suing cities, and they look for organizations like ourself, where they may think we don't know what we're doing, or we don't have the resources, and we actually have had previous ADA litigant in this town, so I am a little gun-shy when it comes, I do believe in protecting the town's money, because everybody may not see the money we're spending here as worthwhile, but, you know, settling a false claim for somebody for a couple hundred thousand really frosts me, so I'd much rather put it to work this way.
So a question I have, potentially, Graham, for you, and I've been trying to look through our 103-page bid docs to find the answer, so I'll just ask you, since I'm sure you've memorized the whole thing. And this is obviously based on the council's determination of how to proceed. Is there a way, first of all, to potentially pull out the, what appears to be the primary concern area in Washington Park? Or does that have a significantly negative impact on our ability to bundle all these items together for bid? That'd be one piece. The other piece would be, if we say, you know, what we're going to, we have to move forward on the ADA compliance issue, we are going to move forward with some mitigation of the rolled curb, street, visual contrast issue, but we don't know how yet, and leave that open-ended, can we do, can we do that? Or are the docs written so specifically in the specs that there, you know, town managers mentioned, we have at least three options under consideration, so I'm assuming that we have some leeway with how we might try to achieve solution?
It's interesting, the town council in the past passed a resolution ordinance saying that 90% plans for projects over 100,000 will be brought to the council, so now I think this is why this is done. Just to get your input. One idea for the Washington Park ramps is to do a bid alternate, so the council can award a project based on the base bid, and then if you want to continue with the Washington Park project, we can break that out as an alternate, that you could choose to award or not award. This is often done on projects because of cost, we don't know what the cost is until we get the bid. So on the slurry seal project, we had alternates for some sections of roadway that are not as high a priority, so we said, okay, this is the base bid, we really recommend this. If the bids come in high, and the town council doesn't want to put the money towards these alternates, then you would, you could choose not to award that, so we could do something similar with this. In terms of, do you want to do that, one consideration is not just the money, but the risk, and I think the town manager's been talking with Parsac, our insurance carrier, and they are recommending that we do these curb ramps to comply with ADA as soon as possible, because you never know when a litigant is going to come into town, and many towns have been sued and lost, from Sacramento to small communities like Dixon. So it is recommended that we move forward with this, now that we are aware that we have been, you know, put together, we're sort of are on notice, that, you know, something should be done, and we have seen people walking through the neighborhood, and it is, you know, would be good to have these ramps at the corners so people can get through the neighborhood more safely. In terms of the, you know, demonstration, or, you know, some options, alternatives, we can do a demonstration project like near Forester Park, where you can do some reflectors, some striping. We can either do that with town staff, or we can put it into the contract, so. So this is the opportunity to get input from the town council on, do you have any comments that we'd like incorporated into the plans and specifications, which, such as the color of the truncated domes? You know, we'll have a comment to our consultant, change the plan, show charcoal gray truncated domes. So if there's anything like that, now is the time to let us know so we can incorporate those, so that we can do a, you know, have this as part of the contractor's bid instead of having a change order, which would cost more during construction.
I'd just point out that the lion's share of the heavy construction work is actually the Washington Park component. So we would really lose our scale of economy. If the council would prefer, I would echo what the Public Works Director's saying. We can do a demonstration project very quickly and set up a demo area along Forester Park showing the paint stripe and the reflectors and not have that wait until the completion of the ADA construction project. So I mean, if that's something the council would like to see us move quicker, we can certainly put that together and then host a community meeting out at Forester Park and get feedback. Because like I say, there, we'll see if there's a fourth alternative than we've mentioned, but those three have all been reviewed by risk management consultants. And, you know, to be perfectly honest, they're telling us that the current condition is not unsafe and, but we're hearing from residents that express a concern about it. And so we need to look at that. So I think that would be the three alternatives, and we could probably put that demonstration project together in a month.
So a question for our town attorney on this one. The fact that we have brought this item up, even if we don't act on it tonight, if we have demonstration, that's showing good faith and basically mitigating any, I don't want to call it illegal condition because it's, it's showing that we fully intend to comply with the ADA regulations. Is that fair statement?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, I'm comfortable with the, the fact that you've reviewed this matter, that it's been before you, that the way you take no action tonight, you're, I think we're in good shape.
Or we could take action, as Graham mentioned, and revise, since this is just going out to bid at this point, revise the language so that we pull out this one piece of the project, this significant piece of the project, and ask for some kind of alternative. I'm not sure, we'll have to have the council discuss, and I'm sure I'm going to hear from our town manager in a moment, that that might just confuse things more than it's worth. So potentially, I want to hear discussion from the council, certainly before we do anything, but we have a couple of things to figure out if we want to act on tonight or just put off until we have a little bit more information on how to proceed in a whole...
A couple of things to clarify. And I want to make sure, the issue about the depth delineation of the rolled curb is not addressed one way or the other in the ADA curb cut project. So the suggestion that I would offer is to continue with the ADA curb cuts with the gray and direct staff to move forward with putting together the demonstration project of the options on the delineation, because then you're addressing both issues. A concern that I would share is that we are now on notice, constructive notice, both from a staff standpoint, and not taking action on the ADA while taking action on other ADA ramps does potentially expose. The fact that we're talking about it is a positive, but at some point they're going to look at, what are we doing? And the fact that we chose not to do something could be duly noted. And that's my only concern, is that not doing something, your own comments, that we mucking it up? Because right now, this bid has nothing to do with the delineation issue. Whatever we do there, I would recommend, as the Public Works Director, that we do a demonstration pack, project with our own staff, and then we can evaluate from there what additional work may be necessary. Because I will share with you, from what I've heard in the community, I don't know that there's a real consensus on what they want to do yet. So we really do need that demonstration project to really get a handle on that.
So maybe I misunderstood, Graham, what you were saying in terms of a bid alternative. Were you talking about potentially adding that to this package as a bid alternative? No, so maybe I...
No, the bid alternative was just for the ramps. So the, on the plan sheet, you'll see A through J, 1 through 15 or whatever. So that, all those could be taken as a separate bid item. And so the contractor would bid on everything else, and then they'd do a separate bid total for that. And the council would choose to award just the base or all of the projects that are identified in the plans. It would be, I would not recommend adding, you know, the striping or the reflectors or some other alternative into this set of plans, because I don't think there's consensus on what we want to do. So I would also recommend a demonstration in front of Forester Park and to look at, you know, some alternatives to see if there's some consensus we can come to that we feel is addressing the concern about people falling off the sidewalk, because there's difference in elevation, but it's hard to say.
So I guess a question that I still have then is, when in the staff report, it lists the project as discretionary as opposed to mandatory. My understanding is, for the compliance, we need to do the corner cuts, which is mandatory to comply by ADA regulation. Is that not accurate?
I think I'd refer to the town attorney because it's...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I'm trying to address it in this fashion. Yes, the best of all possible worlds would be is to address the accessibility issues through this process now. If there, if there was no attention or no recognition that there needs to be a project that's going to include ADA accessibility improvements, then I think we'd be in some problem. But I think staff is attempting to address these ADA issues by including this in the CIP budget, and it's the best possible approach. Now, after it goes out to bid, if the town council has some concerns or other direction that you wish to provide, I think certainly we can at least attempt to address it. But the best of all worlds would be to address it currently.
Okay, thank you. I've been doing all the talking. I'd like to hear from the rest of the council on this. Vice Mayor, question?
A question I have is, talking about demonstration project, this hasn't even gone out to bid yet. So once, how long does it take to go to bid? And then how long do we have to accept it after that? And that may give enough time to do what you're talking about.
Again, let me point out, this particular project is the construction of the curb cuts throughout town.
I know that.
Not the demonstration project, not the installation of the reflector.
So how long is the...
We can put that together.
RFP process.
Well, I think there's a couple of things.
It's a 30-day bid period. I think we're coming back to council, the second meeting in April for award, if I remember correctly. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but I think that's about the timeframe.
And for example, if the reflective...
Because we want to finish the project before July.
If the reflective devices are used as the ultimate solution, that's probably something we could potentially do with our own resources. And again, I would assume that, you know, for us to put a demonstration project together, community outreach, hold a meeting, we're probably looking at 30 to 45 days, so not, you know, and then we get the feedback from you all on how you want to do. I look at that, that's going to be new work in addition to this project. That's how I would look at it. And once we get the feedback from the neighborhoods and the council, then you can decide whether you want to contract out paint striping or the installation of the dots. And we'll be able to have a better idea of what that looks like.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes. I do not see any, you know, problem with doing these things concurrently. So going ahead with the ADA RFP and getting that, getting the bids in on that, and also creating, I think that's the best possible thing to do, would be to create an example of, you know, give the residents an opportunity to see, will this work or would this, something else work? And also possibly, you know, I don't know who the RFP would be awarded to, to do the curb cuts. I don't know whether they'd be the same people who would do the kind of striping or whatever that, but if so, maybe the best of all possible worlds would be to get a deal from them because they got the, you know, the curb cutting project. So I don't know. It seems to me like you could do both.
Councilmember Roller?
I think that we definitely need to do the ADA. We have going out to bid, I really don't see a downside to that. So that's what I would favor, is go ahead and send us out to bid. We're not going to know anything for at least 30 days, and we've seen other bids, sometimes people don't even bid on them. So we've got quite a bit of time before we really are going to be approving anything. So I think we should go ahead and move it forward. I think town staff has some really good ideas about the delineation. Let's try the demo. That's going to be really interesting. I don't even live over there, but I'd kind of like to see it. So, and it is an issue over there. I tend to walk in the street because, especially if it's dark, I don't see where I'm going. So, you know, whether it was, they were designing sidewalks or not, that's how we're using it. It's just like, people put sidewalks in sometimes, and then there's new paths created in the dirt. And I think that's just kind of one of the cases here. So I would go ahead and move forward with this RFP for the ADA sidewalks. And I trust the staff will move forward with trying to come up with something to fix the delineation. There seems, those are two things. So the third thing is the slurry seal issue. So we haven't really talked about that, and I really don't know, is that to be addressed later? Are we still working with warranty? I just don't have enough information to really comment on the third thing. So those are my opinions right now.
In terms of the slurry seal, this was done in October of 2011, I believe, was the project. And we did do some warranty work. It's a one-year warranty. So they went and did some work on Forester and the intersection on Jasmine and Mount. That was about the best we could do in terms of areas that had failed. Most of the area had still held, but was, you know, some of the gravel was, or the rocks were coming out of the slurry seal. That will, will happen with the slurry seal, but it was worse in this situation. So as the town manager mentioned, in this, the other project you approved was a slurry seal project for this coming fiscal year. We have hired a new consultant for the design, new specifications, which include having rollers go over the slurry seal. So when we went through our P process, we learned a few things from different consultants. So those have been included. Crack sealing is something that we'd like to include in our maintenance more frequently. It hasn't been done much in the town. The town staff doesn't have the equipment to do it, so we usually hire contractors. It can be difficult to keep up with. Caltrans has the same issue of, you know, in other cities, NAPA and all, the county. So crack sealing is an ongoing problem. You know, you can seal the cracks and they'll open up in the cold weather and they'll, the goop will squeeze out in the hot weather. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing problem that, you know, in the industry and all agencies have. But we have looked at hiring a contractor to do just crack sealing in neighborhoods, not just this one, but others as well. A lot of people find it, you know, not very attractive. So what we try to do is the crack sealing right before we do a slurry seal. So it's, but it doesn't always work out that way. I mean, Metropolitan Transportation Commission recommends more, you know, frequent crack sealing to keep your, keep the water out of the base. So the contractor did go back and crack seal much of the neighborhood, Washington Park neighborhood, as, under the warranty. But like I said, the warranty was for one year and it's expired at this time. So I don't know if that answered all your questions on slurry seal or crack sealing or so.
So that is outside the scope of this RFP as well.
Correct. So this is just going to be concrete work, pretty much.
That's what...
Now, we do have a payment management program, which does list, you know, when streets should be slurry sealed and overlaid. And so it's in the queue. It will come up again in five, seven years or so. So at that point, then we would go back and do the crack sealing and slurry sealing again. Now, if our, if the street, you know, doesn't hold up as well as we had hoped, they evaluate every other year, and so they could see if it needs a treatment sooner than later.
Okay. All right, so that's something we really won't...
We're monitoring it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor, any additional comments or...
I agree with what I've heard here.
Okay. What I just want to, again, try to stress is, I think what you're seeing and hearing is the town being very responsive to all of the concerns that we're hearing tonight and have heard before. I'm going to agree that we should move forward with this project because it is targeting the ADA non-compliance issue. That doesn't mean by omission from this project that we're not going to continue diligently to work on improving the condition of the visual contrast issue, the slurry seal, the quality of the work. We were, and as was mentioned in public comment, we were not satisfied with the company that did the work initially and don't plan on using them again, and have done what we can. But we're also only allowed to do so much, short of a lawsuit, and then we get into different issues. But when technically and legally their work is deemed acceptable, then that's when our staff has to figure out, what do we do to, you know, bring it up to the level of standard that we expect in all of our neighborhoods? So we'll absolutely continue with town staff and hopefully neighborhood members to take care of the other issues that really aren't being addressed with this item. I know we probably got a little too perfect with trying to explain the progression of when we do the corner cuts, that's going to help a little bit, it's not going to solve it, and that just kind of confused the issue. So I think we'll absolutely be moving forward with ways to mitigate the rolled curb issue, whether it's called a sidewalk or a parking bay or a parking area, I think is moot at this point. So I'm comfortable moving forward with approval of this item in particular.
I was going to say, the only other alternative would be that the neighborhood eliminate the asphalt and return to DG, then they would negate that requirement.
But that's, again, not really what we're trying to address tonight, which is the ADA corner cut issue. These are related, but they are separate. They'll be continued to be addressed, and we'll find some creative ways to hopefully satisfy as high a percentage, close to 100% of the residents as we can. So with that, is there a motion on item 7D?
Oh, I move that we approve, adopt resolution number 3091-13, approving plans and specifications and authorizing solicitation for bids for the accessibility improvements and sidewalk replacement projects, CP-2013 and CP-3013.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We may have just set a record for our consent calendar items. But very much appreciate your coming forward, sharing some of your photographs, and certainly staff, I think if we can hold on to those or return them and bring them back to help with the discussion of how we're going to find some solutions to improve the situation. So thank you for that. We're going to move on now to item eight, presentations. The first one being, presentation of, this is a good, good way to start, presentation of incentive check for methane gas capture project located at the Joint Wastewater Treatment So I think I'm going to come down, and we have, Graham, were you going to give any kind of buildup to this grand occasion?
We actually have a slideshow that we have that shows some of the before and after pictures of the project, and I believe this will loop on through.
It goes through.
Was it, was it slide or the presentation?
It's the presentation.
Oh, okay. So with the methane capture project, this is a system that had mostly failed, was clogged. And so it was not working, it was not operable at the time. What happens is, the, this is, at the wastewater treatment plant, this is what's called a digester. And the sludge is put in here, creates a methane gas. And in the past, this methane gas has been released to the atmosphere. So what this project did was came in and captured that methane gas, put it into the burner, which is used to heat the digester, which is part of the treatment process, and then that reduces our P G E bill. So this was the picture of the old flare up close. We spend about $16,000 per year on P G E gas, so it's one of our major costs out at the treatment plant. This is some of the old piping before the project. One of the meters was removed. This is what it looked like after, new meters, new piping. So this, we can monitor how much gas is coming out of the digester, how much is being burned in the burner, and how much is going to the flare. This is when they're trenching out to the new flare. It has electronic pilot. It burns only as needed. I did want to mention to people that at night, if you're out near the Veterans Home with a golf course, you may see some flames. Don't call the fire department because it's just burning off methane. Probably more during the summer than during the winter as well. So there was valving, hatches, flow meters, new vents. This is what the old flare looked like before the project. This is a new flare and new control panel that's looking towards the east. And just some of the results of the project, there's a... And just some of the results of the project, there's about $10,000 per year savings in gas, about 67% reduction. Tonight, we're talking about the cash incentive. The project was, the actual construction was 229,000, which is a good bang for the buck. And the rest of that money will be part of a on-bill financing program with PG&E, which is 0% loan, which is good money. And one of the things that was really surprising was the amount of greenhouse gas reduction. The town, part of our municipal operations that we, you know, control our vehicles, our buildings, has about 1,100 tons per year. So, by eliminating 600 tons per year, we're reducing our greenhouse gases by 50%. And AB 32 is asking agencies to reduce their gas, greenhouse gases by 20%. So, we've well exceeded that amount. I also want to recognize the design team of Liscure and Acxiom and the contractor, our ESCO Corporation, was Butler Corporation. They did design and build on this project and it was completed in 2012. So, I think we have a big check here to present to the mayor.
Yeah. So, if you could maybe introduce yourself and just explain why you're giving us money tonight. I mean, I think it was explained a little bit right there.
My name is Ryan Porter. I'm account manager at Pacific Gas and Electric, which includes the account manager of the town of Yountville, just FYI. So, as you know, Yountville just completed the methane recapture facility at the wastewater treatment plant. They also took advantage of incentives available at PG&E for the work they did. As a slideshow, they, you guys also went through the on-bill financing program with the 0% interest, no fees, up to $250,000 per meter for the public sector. And so, I do have this check. It stands as a symbol between the partnership of PG&E, the town of Yountville, and also the PG&E third-party program, Quest, who was the implementer of this project. And overall, PG&E does appreciate your business. And from what I heard, it was a very smooth process. And speaking with Ed in the back, appears you guys are already reaping the rewards. So, overall, thank you.
Well, I'm not going to miss an opportunity to come down and pose with you down there for. People don't bring us giant checks every day, believe it or not.
That's so fun.
So, yeah, let's take one this way and then I'll turn around and get.
Sure.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Can't hear all the cameras clicking. I don't know which way to look. Just keep smiling, that's the key. Here, we, let's, can we see it up there?
Perfect.
I'm sure you did.
Uh-oh. Walking zeros.
Yeah, right.
Take it to the bank, right?
I'm ready.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Don does.
I'll take it to the bank tomorrow.
Louis, are you going to try to deposit it?
Deposit. That would go into my account though.
That would be really bad.
That would create some trouble.
I do want to thank PG&E and our town staff also for partnering on this. It's been a long time coming and it's really helping solve many issues, environmentally as well as financial. So, thank you very much. And if we can be, you know, just a strong example of how we can partner and bring something like this together, we'd be happy to do that. So, tell everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Dawn, I see that you're here. Would you like to come up and just make a comment about the project at all? I mean, we don't get to see it very often.
Put him on the spot.
You have to come on up. Come on up. I'm going to make you now.
You can come up and say no.
If nothing else, if nothing else, we just want to formally thank you on behalf of the entire council for all that you've done and your team to bring this finally to fruition. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think with the support of council and admin staff, we can do these kinds of projects that have a good bang for the buck. Yeah, we're very excited about the project and, you know, the recycled water project expansion, this methane capture, trying to do the right thing and reduce our carbon footprint. I think we're well on our way.
I think we're writing a check for the recycle loan, right? We're not getting a check?
Yeah, they're probably not going to give us a lot of money. We're going to borrow a little bit.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you again. Next up, I think we're going to receive a check from, oh, no, I guess not. Sorry, Linda. A presentation of the Napa City County Library Commission from our Yountville representative, Linda Conchilien. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Linda Conchilien and I'm the library commissioner for the town of Yountville. Mayor Dunbar and council members, I'd like to give you my annual update on the library commission. The library commission spent the majority of 2012 working on the new strategic plan and logo. This was presented to you by the library director, Dennis Krymeier. Remember this back in October. The commissioners worked on updating and rewriting our bylaws, mission statement and job descriptions. The commission is discussing changing the delivery of our commission packets to electronic mailing. And we approved adding a high school student to our commission that will serve for two years. We attended an effectiveness training session by the California Association of Library Trustees and Commissioners. I worked together with the ad hoc library committee, the county, and the commissioners for the grand opening ceremony of the Yountville Volunteer Extended Hours Program. It was attended by supervisor Diane Dillon, Dennis Krymeier, and three library commissioners, Lonnie Payne Clark of Napa County, Jack Benj, Commission President of the City of Napa, and Shelby Valentine of Calistoga. We have 20 great volunteers from our community who love to support our library and this program. I usually stop by every Wednesday during the volunteer hours and I continually hear how this is a great start, but they still want more library hours. As you know, Ms. Krymeier stated in her October presentation to the council that the volunteer program is being evaluated now and no longer accepting applications for volunteers. Mayor Dunbar and Councilor Dornbecker asked Dennis what were the criteria for this evaluation, but she didn't answer. Unfortunately, I still cannot answer that question. I ask that the council continue to support this program because so many residents use our library and want it open more hours. I continue to attend the Friends of the Library meetings and work with its members to support our library and its programs. For example, purchasing aprons for the volunteers, earphones, book bags, and funding the summer reading program. My goal is to make the Yountville community aware of all the wonderful programs that are offered at our library. In the next year, I hope that we're able to give our community what they are asking for, more library hours, more consistent hours, and allow our volunteers to help make this happen with more program hours. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions of council about the report? Councilor Dornbecker?
No, but I just want to thank Linda. I attended the last committee meeting and I was very impressed with her representation of our town and our library. So, thank you. And since our budget meetings are coming up, I think we're going to have some discussions on what we can do to interject some excitement on the part of the county to, you know, adding more hours and more consistent hours. So, thank you very much, Linda.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Moore?
I just, again, like to thank Linda for stepping up and playing such a great role as being our commissioner, I think as everybody heard. She really does a great job of not only representing us on the county commission board, but also she's been very involved with Marita and I on the ad hoc committee and everything. You know, when we have a meeting, we usually have Linda there and she's also very involved getting, with the Friends of the Library. So, it's all those three pieces, I think, that really has added a lot to her service to us. So, thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
I would say, I think you've probably had the busiest tenure in this role with all that's happened, possibly when we had the library moved from this building over. It was significant also, but you've seen a very strong response from the community, as we often do, about a variety of issues to come forward and find the solution and be, be part of the solution, which is what this volunteer program has turned into. And we will continue to keep pressure on the county, frankly, not only to find out what their criteria is, but to have as positive an impact on that criteria as we did when our ad hoc committee was so good at helping get those hours extended in the first place. We could have stopped and said, oh, well, the county said they can't do it, I guess we can't do it. But we didn't take that for an answer. We won't, we won't take it.
You don't tend to listen to that kind of response.
No. But being part of the solution is really critical and part of the conversation. So, thank you for kind of being our main voice and face in those conversations. And I'll also thank council members, Dornbecker and Mueller, for your involvement in that ad hoc committee as well.
Yeah, their support's been wonderful.
Great. Well, we look forward to the next report about all the additional hours and additional programming that we have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Yountville Arts Committee update. And I see we have a couple of our esteemed, hardworking members present.
You get me.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to first recognize Rhonda Shear and Kimberly Cook and Stephen Cook for, Stephen, your support of the two really hardworking members of our newly formed arts commission, our most recent addition in front of community hall, Gordon Huether's brand-new redhead sculpture, really, again, another example of the hard work and dedication you've all given to serving your community with bringing just new, fresh, vibrant art for us all to enjoy. So, thank both of you. And I know there are a couple others that aren't here tonight, but thank you for being here and all the work that you're doing. So, with that, Samantha?
Thank you. Thanks for the intro, John. So, I get the pleasure of presenting the Yountville Arts Year in Review this year for 2012. And as you mentioned, we have Kimberly Cook and Rhonda Shear, who are our committee members, soon to evolve into commission members, hopefully. And not here tonight, Rob Anglin and Nancy Gates and also Rob Winterberg, who I believe participated part of the year last year. So, I just want to touch on a few things. You did receive the written report and I won't take too long. There is a lot, a lot went on in 2012. But some of the highlights were the Photographic Society three-day show and then the Open Studios three-day show at the community center. Those were two of the largest fundraising events that Yountville Arts coordinated last year. And that's really an important endeavor because they really do fundraise pretty much everything that they utilize to put in pads and really build the infrastructure for the program. There were seven different shows that came through the Yountville Community Center Gallery last year, and that's really Rhonda's baby, the Community Center Gallery. And for each show, we also would do a reception to honor the artist. And the last show you'll see there is in, still currently in the reading room, which is a partnership with the Yountville Elementary School Art Program for them to program the walls in the reading room. So, that's a terrific partnership with the school that Rhonda worked on as well. So, we also had seven new Art Walk sculptures go in last year, which is a lot of work. And that is Kim's, Kim Cook's baby is the Art Walk. And every one of those installations takes a lot of finesse and a lot of behind-the-scenes work, working with the artists, getting them everything they need and trying to find the perfect location for them. So, it's a lot of work. And when you look at it on paper, it's like, wow, seven? Like, it doesn't even seem possible. Nancy Gates oversees our literary committee and she's not with us tonight, but the book club meets every month at the community center and they continue to get reinvigorated with new members. They have a pretty strong group right now. Nancy also organized our second mystery writers event, which had four New York Times bestselling authors there, which was attended pretty well by about 85 people in the valley. But it's not very often that you get bestselling authors altogether in one place. So, that was terrific. They also did a movie and book night. And then we also partnered with Paul Franzen for the Insider's Guide to Napa Valley, which was his new book that came out. And he did a book signing in partnership with Yountville Arts. A couple of other exciting things was the new Art Walk map that we developed in conjunction with the Edelman team, as you know, works with the Chamber of Commerce, for the map to be something that was fluid, that we could update as new pieces come in and out of the Art Walk. And so, we, I think we've done one update and we're gearing up for the second update printing in the next few weeks. And also, a huge endeavor was establishing the commission. We spent a lot of time on that and the members spent a whole lot of time making sure that the bylaws that came forward to you were ones that they were proud of and stood behind and would last far beyond their tenure in the, on the committee. And that was a lot of blood, sweat, and maybe some tears here and there, but it did come forward and I think we're all pretty proud of that. And then also in December, we actually sold the first Art Walk sculpture for a commission, which was fantastic, which was classinator, that it didn't move. It was actually remade for the purchase, for the buyer from the artist. So, that was exciting for us, too. So, I'm here to answer questions and Kim and Rhonda are here and you already gave them a lot of great kudos. But as Louis, we love to quote him now. It's like our favorite quote, that this is the most productive committee, commission in the history of. And I think as busy as we are, I really agree. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out before I ask for other council comments is that the last art committee meeting that I attended, it was really fun to hear that the balance in the art fund is no longer, you know, counted by dollars and cents, but by, it was a little over $11,000, I think it was, somewhere in that area. And I just remember it wasn't that long ago when we were talking about who was going to bake the cookies for the reception. And so, really remembering how far we've all come at your, you know, great effort and pain, it's almost like it's been here for, you know, years and years and it's only been just a, just a couple hard-earned years. So, that alone and the fact that we're having artists reach out to us and say, how can we be involved? How can we be a part of what's going on in Yountville? That is also a testament to all the great work. And so, no pressure, no pressure to keep it up. Any thoughts from council vice mayor?
I was going to say, I saw the bylaws. How long did it take to do the bylaws?
It was over a year, I think, we worked on that. Yeah.
Well, you're still the most efficient committee in the history of government.
That was the biggest sticking point.
It took the county one, it took the county one, two and a half years to come up with our bylaws.
Ooh, we beat them right.
But you guys achieved things in the meantime, I want to point that out. I thought it was really interesting to look at the Art Walk sculptures. Not only was there seven, but there were six different artists. And the same thing at the community center, there's nine artists and/or groups that were there. So, it's not just, you know, kind of going to the well of the same people over and over, which also means a lot more effort. I think what's cool about Yountville and the valley in general is a few people can make a really big difference and you guys really have. I mean, it had a tremendous impact on this town. And it was pretty ironic when the, I call it the spaghetti, but the red hair, when that was installed the same day as the pasta feed, there was a bunch of us who kind of looked over there and said, somebody is really looking to promote this event. But it was, it was excellent timing. So, unknowingly, you did a great thing there. So, thank you.
Any other, councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I just wanted to also just, you know, thank everybody. I know that very few people, except yourselves, realize just the amount of effort that you really put into this. So, I just wanted to give you a personal thank you for all that. And regardless of what you're putting in, I can tell you there are some people that love it and some people that don't, but they're all talking about it. So, that's really what matters. So, thanks for your time.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I want to say a very heartfelt thank you and congratulations on the work that you've done. It's been so impressive and I hope that we'll have the opportunity to support you as you've supported our town so, so much. And I just think very, very highly of you, as you know. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, another comment?
Well, I had one thought, and this is just a thing to think about. I was thinking about the six different artists and all the different people with the community center gallery. Is anything that we can do to help you recognize those artists for their contributions because they do it in general? Even if it's just we write a letter from the town council and I'll sign it and they get a beautiful letter? And even if it's, you know, I mean, Gordon Huether has given, I don't know how many pieces of art, even if he gets a letter, every single time he gives us something, it's just so people know that we are recognizing they are doing that. So, that's just a thought. I'm sure everybody would be willing to sign it up.
I think even, even more important than a letter with our signatures is the fact that they're now getting it stipend with our town manager's signature on it. So, again, that's how the evolution process has happened, that instead of begging artists to, you know, kind of have pity on us that we couldn't afford anything, we're now at least able to, to. that we couldn't afford anything, we're now at least able to, to give them a little financial thank you for giving us, you know, world-class, very high-end, original artwork for us to enjoy, both as residents and our visitors. So, and one thing, maybe I'll turn this over to the town manager about the commission itself, and now the fact that we do have positions that we are going to have and try to encourage people to join you in this effort. So, if you wanted to speak to the process.
I will on that, but I first of all want to acknowledge that just recently, the Yountville Arts Committee and the town of Yountville were recognized by the Yountville Chamber with a special recognition award in January for the outstanding contributions that their hard work and the end product has produced for the town. And to see the business community take a look at that and start realizing that the art is contributing is a real positive sign. And now you actually hear throughout the Napa Valley, you know, art is part of the tourism promotion and a big part of that. Secondly, now is the time for our residents that might be interested in being a part of the Yountville Arts Commission. We will begin recruitment. So, if you're interested, talk to myself, Samantha Hall and Wagner, or any of the existing committee members. We are looking. It's a great opportunity. And I will also point out that there's also volunteer roles and advisor roles for people that may want to be involved in the Arts Commission, but not necessarily as a commissioner. We recognize that there's a different level of commitment that people may want to make, and we're going to try to facilitate all of that.
Great. Thanks again. And thanks for being here tonight. We're going to move on to our public hearing for this evening, and that is the Napa Valley Toy Company, a use permit amendment. And I invite staff to open up with a staff report.
Well, tonight you have before you the first request for the exterior display of merchandise. And the application is the result of the recent sign ordinance update, the new definition for exterior display of merchandise, and the requirement for a use permit. And this applicant's request has two elements. One is for the daily display of merchandise, and the other is for the holiday display of merchandise. And the daily display includes some of the items you see here, the fire engine, the race car, Chester the chimpanzee, and the barrel with the stick ponies, in addition to the two arrangements of helium balloons. And the applicant indicates that this represents the branding of the store, that it's the same display that is used down in Napa, and it's how customers recognize the business. Also included in the request is a request for holiday display items, and these include items that are representative of the holidays, but they're not merchandise, they're not for sale. And the two toy soldiers represent this category. Also included are merchandise items that are reflective of the holidays, such as the boxes of Lego Advent calendars. And the applicant indicates it would also include other items displayed during holidays, such as Easter, but these are yet to be defined as to size and quantity. The applicant is requesting permission to display these in two locations, and so that is modification or clarification of the staff report where I mentioned it's just Madison Street. The applicant would like to display items on a daily basis at the interior doors that face the courtyard. And these are visible, this is that shown here, visible from Washington Street, although it's indirect, and it's seen through the corridor from Washington back to R&amp;D Kitchen. The other door faces Madison Street, and that is the one shown here. And these would be displayed weather permitting. So, the idea is during the warmest months of the year, merchandise would be displayed at both entries, and I think we could assume this would happen more often than not. The purpose of the use permit process is to review an application on a case-by-case basis, based on its merits. And there are a lot of different factors to look at to determine whether a display is appropriate in terms of the method of display and specific to the business and location. And these are noted in the staff report, but some of the items to consider are the size, area, and volume of the display that the applicant is requesting permission for, the location of the item, both its proximity to the front door, but also its distance or setback from the sidewalk or the public right-of-way. Also important are the size of the display area, the size of the business, and the method of display, whether that be a still-life form of presentation or otherwise. And perhaps most important is the appropriateness of the item. And we've acknowledged that this is a difficult standard to develop a uniform standard for, but it's the type of thing, we know it when we see it. These items are raised in an attempt to set some metrics or boundaries or standards for the display of this merchandise, and it would apply both to this applicant, but also when we consider applicants from future business owners to display merchandise. So, turning to this applicant's request, there are quite a few items that are requested for display, and I would suggest that we consider these in smaller chunks. The first being the fire engine, the race car, the chimpanzee, and the barrel of ponies, since these represent the applicant's branding. Staff finds that these four items are really limited in number and that they tend to work for the site, but it works for this specific business and this specific location. The display is in a still-life form of presentation. It's arranged. It's on a large patio that's setback quite a distance from the street, and the items are unique, and they have a restrained quality. So, we feel, you know, these four items really work. The next category would be the extra items, and staff has struggled with how to define what's acceptable and what isn't. And these extra items could be said to contribute clutter. They might just make the display too much, or they might be appropriate. So, I'll mention them for your information. The first would be the helium balloons. And this is an item of merchandise. It's sold by the toy store. It definitely attracts attention to the business, perhaps more so than some of the other items. And for this reason, it has an advertising quality. And under the sign ordinance, balloons are not permitted at other types of businesses. It would be an exception here because it's a toy store and they sell balloons. So, it might be acceptable, and that's an item for your consideration. The other item are the stacks of toys and boxes, and this, too, is merchandise, but it doesn't have the same unique quality as some of the other items. And it's unknown, really, whether it contributes to the quality of display or just contributes to clutter. So, staff is suggesting that perhaps these two items not be permitted, but it is open for discussion. The idea of flexibility comes up with this display because there are four items selected, or at least recommended by staff, but the question is whether these should be modified over time, whether there should be that flexibility. And staff thinks the answer is yes, that that will lead to a display that is current and interesting, as long as any replacement items really hold to the same characteristics that are described in the staff report. Moving on to the holiday display, the applicant states that these generally fall into items that are representative of holidays, but not necessarily merchandise items. And the toy soldiers are an example. The holiday-associated displays are governed under a different section of the code of the sign ordinance. These are permitted for a maximum of sixty days per year, and they must be removed no later than two weeks after the holiday. And because of these rules and the fact that the display is requested in addition to the display of merchandise, staff is suggesting that we limit these displays to two items, and that would allow the two toy soldiers, but it would not permit the boxes of toys with the Lego Advent calendars. Lastly, the applicant is requesting that both entryways be permitted to display merchandise items, and staff is supportive of this. Both entries target different customers from different vantage points, and they can't be seen at the same time. If you do so, staff mentions that we'll need to modify the resolution to indicate that it is approval for both entries. Thank you.
Any questions about the staff report? Councilmember Mohler?
So, my first question is, how much did it cost the applicant to get to this point, to put all this together and come to the council?
We've provided a flat fee of five hundred dollars for these applications. In the interest of not discouraging business owners from submitting, I can definitely say we've put in more than that amount of time to process this application, but we want to keep the price low.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I have a question about your staff report. And in the, in the resolution itself, you say that the applicant should be required to submit an annual monitoring fee in the amount of five hundred and eleven dollars. I don't understand that.
We apply a monitoring fee to all use permits for the monitoring over the course of the year, the time it takes staff to go out and ensure that the display is according to the approval, and all businesses operating under a use permit pay that fee.
And what background do you have in merchandising for a toy store?
None. I'm a planner, not a merchandiser.
Do you find, which of the items do you find offensive?
I don't find any of the items offensive. I know that this town has had a very strict rule on the exterior display of merchandise. This is the first time it's been opened. There's been discussion about clutter and too many items and what that might mean for other businesses. So, we presented it in a manner of the different things that we looked at whenever we look at any one application in order to try to put some standards on it, realizing this is our first time, and we're by no means experts.
Can you answer, is the construction around the store, is that completed now? Because I know during the whole Christmas season, they had only access to one door, and they were, you know, it was boarded up around the other side and everything. Is that all?
Some of the perimeter fencing has been removed, and you can access the business from both entryways now. It's only the immediate area around R&amp;D Kitchen that's still fenced off.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions? I did want to ask Sandra, we didn't really touch on the banner part of the report, and your concern, or just bringing up the issue for consideration, the toys signage that's currently at the top of the door. Is there anything else to talk about in terms of banner? Or is that really all you wanted to highlight?
I wanted to highlight that it's not a part of this application because it's a banner for temporary signage, and I don't think we need to worry about that. That will be removed when, when the permanent signage is installed.
So, that's not being proposed as part of this? And so, that was part of the, I know the town gave considerable leeway during the construction for temporary display because it was basically hidden behind all the green fence. We all know that.
I wanted to mention it because you can see it, although it's not part of the approval that you would be granting tonight.
Right, okay, great. Vice Mayor, yes?
I do have a question. The five hundred and eleven dollar monitoring fee, you said it is for use permits. Is that for any use permit? So, if you have a use permit for a tasting room, is it a five hundred dollar fee?
It is.
Final question? That's it?
That's it.
Okay, so now I'd like to open the public hearing, part of the public hearing, and invite the applicant to come forward and make a presentation, ask questions, provide answers.
I'd like to introduce myself first for the record. Renee Fannin, representing the Napa Valley Toy Company. I don't really have, you know, a big presentation, other than the photos that were already submitted. I just want the opportunity to display the merchandise, similar to how it is displayed in Napa. I do think, albeit small, I've created somewhat of a brand, that people do recognize the entry to the door with the balloons coming out and Chester on his fire engine, who, his brothers can be bought inside the store, but will never be sold. I, you know, I would like to keep that. I think it, you know, from my own aesthetics, it's inviting, and it says, come in, buy toys to the public. And I think it is key to generating traffic into the store. And as far as the balloons, I do think there's an exception there. I would hope you would see an exception there to a winery or another type of business in that I sell the helium balloons there, and they're available for up-valley, for the wineries, for, you know, whomever would need a helium balloon delivery here in Yountville. And so, that is a product you can buy in the store and a product that I've donated to quite a few events locally, and will continue to do so, you know, to town events. So, I would, I would hope and ask that maybe the balloons could be considered in, if the use permit is granted, that perhaps the balloons could be a part of that. I think they're key and, you know, would keep them tasteful and looking essentially permanent. And I will even point out that this display is not exactly how it looks because it was Christmas, and that toy sign is out there. It'll be gone. So, I think when you look at this, if you find that this is aesthetically acceptable, the daily display actually looks better than that when you're not under construction with the toy sign up there and kind of using less merchandise than is typical, given that we were under construction and really had no traffic through there during the Christmas season. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions or...
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Mohler?
So, what was your opinion about the staff recommending no-box toys? Is that something you would like to have?
You know, I would like to have that ability to discern whether it's aesthetically appropriate or not. I mean, sometimes at Christmas, I do a display where I would have put a Radio Flyer wagon with the stacks of Advent calendars, which if anyone's been into the store, you've probably seen. Just because it, I have a big Lego attraction. I have more Lego, I'm going to venture to say, than anyone in the valley. And it's a draw-in to, you know, tourists who say, oh, wow, there's the Lego Advent, you know, it's out. Let's hop in there and buy it. And then it obviously generates that traffic throughout the store. That said, you know, I'm amenable to that being part of the definition of what is not acceptable with the understanding that it does apply to other businesses. And you can understand that you don't want boxes stacked out in front of a business, you know, with discount signs or what have you on them. So, does that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Dornbecker, questions?
Yes, were you told ahead of time that there, that all use permits have this five hundred and eleven dollars attached to it?
I do not recall being told that. That said, if Sandra mentioned it, I would blame the forty-three-year-old memory on that. What I recall was the initial five hundred, which, although, you know, from your perspective and budgeting, is cheap for a small business owner who's been under construction for six months with no customers. That's actually a lot of money to pay for a use permit. And ongoing, you know, seems high compared to other towns and cities, which my only experience with that is Santa Elena and Napa. So...
Any other questions? Vice Mayor, questions?
I don't have questions, no.
No, my question has already been asked about kind of your prioritization of the display items. I guess I do have one additional regarding the two entries, because this is a unique situation. I don't know of any other place in town that has this kind of dual entrance. Each could be considered a main entrance, almost. If only one was granted, I'm guessing you might have a preference, and that might help us. If, like I said, if the discussion is that only one, I'd like to get your guidance on which one.
That's tough at this juncture, just given I haven't really had true traffic flow until that restaurant opens. I'm going to say, I'm going to go out on a limb, which I've been doing with this store since it opened, and guessing what it's going to be like once things are flowing. Probably would want to keep the interior open because I think that's where the restaurant traffic is going to flow.
And I'm also assuming that...
Although then I lose, yeah, sorry.
You know, just, I was going to clarify, maybe I shouldn't even be putting you on the spot for that right now because I'm sure we can craft language. If that was the direction the council wanted to go, that there could either be that determination eventually, there could be the ability to even go from one side to the other, but not both at the same time. There's a similar situation in restaurants. When they open the outdoor patio seating, they have to close off interior seats kind of thing. So, there's, there's the ability to be flexible. You don't have to write it into the, you know, make a call on the spot right now, but I just was curious if there's a distinct advantage to you that you saw one way or the other.
Yeah, I would probably lean towards that interior opening with the thought that traffic is going to flow, hopefully, into that plaza area once the restaurant is open.
Okay. With no other questions from the council, thank you very much. And I'll invite any of the members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Now would be the time. No? No? Yes, please, come on. It does require that you move on up to the microphone, Billy, but that's okay.
I, I'm just thinking here. I haven't been in their new toy store because I don't buy many toys. buy many toys. But I have been downtown Napa, and I've only been in there once, and I think it's a great corner. It's, it's very appealing to the eye to be down there on First Street in that particular spot. So if it's a similar look, I think it would be an advantage for sales to come into town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone? No? Okay. Well, then I'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back with council's consideration.
Mayor and council, may I just, there's one thing I want to address because as the council may or may not remember, when we made the change to allow this, there was the conversation about the fact that we were going down an uncharted course. And the council spent a lot of time talking about administrative approval, what would that look like, all of that. That could be done at a different cost point. So I do want to address a couple of the council's concerns up front. One, we don't have enough direction and feedback from the council to know how to screen a criteria based on the council's prerogative. So the $500 is a deposit. If it's less than that, the applicants refund the amount of money for their project application. Secondly, based on council direction, that you've asked staff to spend more time enforcing conditional use permits because whenever we allow something, also means that we need to be out monitoring because we'll get complaints periodically, or we just need to honestly go out and look, is the applicant doing what they were doing? And we've established that fee was initially $500 two years ago and has gone up incrementally with inflation. Now, it may be such that on a limited basis, we could look at a lower fee for this-related enforcement, but the reality is, especially if there's going to be seasonal variation and change, we're going to have staff time monitoring. And I don't want you to think specifically, this is, my comments are not at all related to the applicant, they're more generic about any applicant that would be coming forward and how we're going to have to monitor ultimately that the stuff that's approved, and stuff may be the wrong word, the quality exterior display, we're going to have to spend some time making sure regardless of the application, that it's where it was supposed to be, that it meets what they said, and that is going to require some staff time. So that's certainly something we'd indicated that when we had a little bit of history, we'd be able to come back and revisit those charges and fees.
Thank you. Yes, we're, this is part of council discussion. You have a question of staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything that says that we don't have the capability of waiving, for example, their fees since, I mean, they have had a horrible, you know, season trying to sell out of that store, and I really want to encourage them, they had a really hard time. Is there some way we could waive this $500 fee for this time?
The challenge I would have is, I don't, you know, one, I would also offer that we've tried to work with the applicant and the property owner on more temporary signage and the property owner was not necessarily willing. I'm going to say, that's a very hard challenge because then you're going to get a lot of businesses saying, "Things aren't so good, I want a variation." And it's very hard for us to process and honestly tell you what the answer to that is. So that's an area I'd really rather not have staff get in, but it certainly, the council's prerogative.
Well, then, how can you have just said that if there, if it doesn't end up being a $500 fee, they could, they'll get a refund or something? I'm trying to figure that out.
Okay, well, let me try to, first of all, the council, let me back up. We worked at no cost with the property owner. In fact, there was a temporary banner they put up and others to try to do signage during the temporary construction. There was no cost associated with that. And the project is still working on and has not completed their master signage program, and that's the Washington Square total program. They have not completed that, so we're still optimistic that they're going to be bringing back some updated master signage, if I'm not mistaken, right, Sandra? I mean, that's something they still have, including monument signs. Now, when the council created and made the changes, you created the opportunity on an application basis for people to do the exterior display. Otherwise, the exterior display is expressly prohibited unless the application comes to the council and gets approval. And that's why there's an application fee to pay for the staff time, the research, and the public hearing for you to get. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to do what they're doing. So I don't know if I'm answering your question on where that fee comes from. And then, once it's approved, then there's the monitoring fee that will be subsequent.
I understand. Thank you.
So I invite council discussion and probable action. Anyone like to begin that? Vice Mayor?
Sure, I'll start. First of all, I'm just going to go tick down a couple of these. I agree with what you said, Renee, the balloons. I did not know until tonight that you sold balloons. So don't write "for sale" on them, but I do think that that should be, I think that should be an exception for this business because you sell them and it's exterior display of merchandise. So I'm okay with that personally. I definitely think you should have both entrances. As far as I'm concerned, the interior side is almost a courtyard and not really relevant to the street. So I support two entrances. I, I agree with you on the boxes. First of all, the Lego Advent calendar is the greatest toy creation of all time. And, but it's kind of hard to, it's hard to make any rules around that one. I don't want to nitpick either way and say, "Well, we don't like that box, but we like that box." So I kind of agree with staff, that probably should not be in there. I personally like those toy soldiers. I wish you'd just pluck those candy sticks out of their hands and leave them there all year because it's, I'm not, I'm not a merchandiser, but it gives nice heights and it's welcoming as far as I'm concerned. So if you were going to add those two in all the time, I'd be fine with that. And then I, I understand staff's perspective. I think in this case, $511 is really excessive, and I think we should at least, if, the only use permit that we really have that we're monitoring is this small item. And I get into the variable cost and fixed cost issue. We're not really, we don't really have more staff costs because of this. So I think we should lower that to $200 or something as a special exemption, just because this is the, this is the only thing that's being monitored. And if you look at these other situations where it's tasting rooms and how many events and et cetera, I understand where that cost comes from, but in this, in this case, I don't understand. So otherwise, I think it's good and I do sympathize for the construction problems you guys have had, disastrous. So hopefully this will help.
So just trying to go back over what staff was asking, you're comfortable with the core items being there-
Yes, yeah.
-on a regular basis, and then you're okay with the balloons. Don't see that as advertising or any kind of signage, but you're hesitant to accept the boxed toys.
Yes, and if it was up to me, I would say your four main toys plus your two toy soldiers are cool, so I'd make that six if it was those toy soldiers. And I'm okay with the balloons, and that's pretty expansive, I think.
And in terms of the holiday display, staff was recommending a limit of two items.
Two extra items?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, okay. So if I'm understanding Sandra correctly, the vice mayor is supporting everything that you were presenting in your staff report, except for the balloons, that he feels that those are acceptable, and you were, you were questioning whether they were or not. So other than that, it's basically as presented in the staff report? Okay. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, this is another rare occasion where I absolutely agree with Louis.
It's not that rare anymore.
On every, no, it's not that rare, actually. It's shocking. But on every point, including rethinking that fee, because we want to encourage small businesses to thrive in our town, and this is a wonderful one that I think, you know, the, it is a welcoming, it's colorful, it's, it looks like art to me. But anyway, I, and I, I understand how, you know, difficult it is to try and make it. So I really think that limiting that to $200 is a fair, fair fee, as it were. So that would be my recommendation.
Councilmember Mueller?
Well, let me talk about the application fee. I know the council did approve it, I did not. And I still think that we need to come back and really think about this. It seems like we're putting the onus on the applicant to pay for something because, quite frankly, we could not do our work to tell them what they could or couldn't do. So I, I still think that I'd like to revisit charging these application fees, especially for, you know, retail such as this, because I totally agree. This is what we need in town. We even put in the retail ordinance, and it really rounds out our town, so. And that being said, even the monitoring fee, I'd go down to $100 if I could get somebody else to agree to that because especially, you know, looking around here, you know, I like all this stuff. I'm for balloons, I like boxed toys, you can have both entrances. Good luck with everything, and I hope you bring the giving tree to Yountville because, and let me know when it comes because everyone's going to pluck them off the first day you get here, it's just, I love that at Christmas time. So that's kind of my opinion. I would allow balloons and boxed toys. I think that a business like this, you know what's going to draw businesses in. If it looks tacky, you know, you've got a business to run here and that's not going to serve you, so why would you do that? Also, in the, I think, you know, switching stuff out, I don't want this to have to come back to the council. I think it should be, you know, if you want to do it while you're monitoring or just call the staff and, "Hey, I'm going to take out the monkey and put in a giraffe," you know. I, I think we just need to be much more lenient on this. And I do totally agree, this is different than wine tasting rooms, which we have plenty of, and they have their own way of drawing people in. So I would like to see as much flexibility given here as possible.
I, I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact, but I'll start by saying I wholeheartedly support your business and I can certainly appreciate the struggles of being in this spot under renovation for as long as it has been. But I'm basically looking at this application as if you just opened the doors now, because I don't think that the fact that you're in a construction zone has any bearing on your use permit moving forward. So just kind of under that context, you'll be hearing some of my comments. I originally, I'm, I'm a clutter person of concern when it comes to the outdoor display. It made me nervous when we agreed to even take these up on a case-by-case basis because I think it gets very difficult to justify for one business and not another. But I realize that we're not necessarily setting a legal precedent because this is a use permit for this particular location. So if we say yes to the items and the balloons, that doesn't mean every business can come say, "We, you let the toy company do balloons, why can't we?" Now, I do worry that if somebody sells banners and they say, "Well, we make banners, you can buy them inside, now I want to put banners outside," that may or may not be a very fair comparison, but I hesitate to say just because you sell the product inside, you should be able to display it outside. I basically support staff's recommendation about all the core items. It looks festive. I always enjoy driving by. Without having kids, I usually don't stop in to buy the toys, but it's a, it's a very refreshing kind of breath of fresh air as you're going down the street down in Napa when you see your display. And it's really, you know, most people, I would think, probably smile when they go by. Hopefully more smile when they come in and spend a lot of money. And so I would hope that happens here as well. I worry about how crowded that space gets, especially as the traffic returns to the square like we all hope and expect it to do. I think it can start to become a bit of a traffic concern on the interior courtyard. I'm hesitating also about the dual entrances. I'm likely to accept that because it is a unique situation. We've just dealt with a restaurant that has also a very similar, unique, no back, no main, you know, there's a main entrance, but sometimes we have to consider the exact location and the circumstances. So I'm intended to agree with allowing the dual displays, even though originally I was thinking you should probably have to commit to one or the other, and that's where I was bringing up the issue of the flexibility about if you see a traffic transition over time, you would have the freedom to change that or pick one side or the other. I'm willing to let both sides be used to start with, but that being said, that for me would be traded off by how much you can put outside each of the entrances. So I'm concerned, I mean, I'm certainly hearing what the rest of the council is saying, and so I have a feeling we're, what direction we're going in, but I would not allow all the display that has been requested. I would not allow the boxed toys. I think there needs to be a limit on how much is out there for display. So that concerns me. We've, I've seen other businesses in town that have done this, and it's been, that's why I was worried about the outdoor display, because they put all kinds of merchandise out there, and some businesses are, have been allowed to do it and others haven't. Because these are very creative, fun toys, family-oriented, we're more likely to say yes to that than a business that doesn't have such a family-oriented product. Are we then going to say, "No, it's not as charming, so we're going to, we're going to restrict you"? That's where I start to get a little nervous. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the display in general. I really hesitate about the balloons. I know that you consider it kind of a core part of your brand, and I'm willing to be persuaded about that for that reason alone. I know the vice mayor made a good point. I assume those were just pure cosmetic out there to draw attention. We've seen that at various other businesses. They do draw attention. They're also, in my opinion, a visual nuisance when it's just done for the sake of capturing somebody's eye. This has a little bit more meaning or a lot more meaning to the business itself, so I would probably be willing to reach some level of agreement. Then we start getting down to the nitpicky, which I don't like doing. How many balloons do you get to put out there? Do you get two, you get four, you get 10, you get 20? And I do think that with, as Councilmember Mueller was referencing, I think we need to allow staff to reach a mutually agreeable number on things like that. How many monkeys? How many ponies? I mean, it's not our business to get down to that. It's more about the overall display, the visual impact. Is it a clutter? Is it a nuisance? And I think it's, it does borderline on that. As fun and festive as they are, we have to be careful that we don't have, you know, when a t-shirt shop, you know, we told Overland Sheepskin Company, they had to put all their, their merchandise back in the store. They sell jackets and sweaters and outerwear. When do we tell them that they can't do that? I mean, that's where I'm, I'm really struggling with this one. Regarding, regarding the fee, I think it's a little cavalier for us just to sit here and say, "Let's pick a new number," after we tell staff that cost recovery is critical in everything else that we do. To just pick a number randomly without even considering staff's time and the effort and the cost of that effort, I don't think is appropriate. I certainly don't think it's appropriate to reopen the discussion about initial application fees. We've gone over that for, for years frankly, and have tried to cost recover. Every budget cycle, we talk about how we need to cost recover and that staff's time should be paid for by the businesses that use it. So I feel like, you know, the conversation has been, "Let's make an exception because we like you guys, we love the business, we want it to thrive." And I just don't know that that's necessarily the right measurement that we should be using. I know I'm kind of rambling on about this, but it's really because it's, I struggle with it. I want to absolutely embrace everything you're doing because it's a, it's a great, new, different business. It is a small business. I understand how difficult it has been during the construction phase. But while it's not a legal precedent, it is setting the tone of what we're going to consider acceptable. And so that's where I'm just- And so, that's where I'm just more hesitant than the rest of the council. It sounds like my voice is a lone voice, which is going to be good for you, but I just want to stress, even if I vote against the application as it's presented, it's in no way a statement about not wanting to support the business. It's about kind of protecting the aesthetic of Washington Square and respecting the aesthetic of the town. Not to say that the rest of the council doesn't care. We just happen to maybe have a different opinion about what is appropriate and what isn't. So, kind of some rambling comments, but hopefully a couple of points were made. I invite any member of the council. Actually, before I invite that, Town Manager apparently has further comment.
I do. I want to, first of all, I appreciate all of the council's comments on both the application fee and the monitoring fee. And I do want to offer a suggestion for revisiting number seven. And I want to point out, staff utilized our existing conditional use permit monitoring fee, which is the broad, and actually, a couple of council comments made me realize that there might be some opportunity to refine this. And I do appreciate the mayor's concern, because I am concerned about cost recovery. But what I am going to offer to you is, if we change sentence seven to read, "The applicant shall be required to submit an annual outdoor display monitoring fee," therefore not, in other words, the premise where I'm going is if somebody else comes and they add it to their existing conditional use permit, they're still going to have to pay the additional 200 related specifically, because we are going to spend time on this. I will guarantee you, and I'm not, this is not, this is why I don't want this conversation to be specific to Napa Valley Toy Store, but staff will end up doing field checks, phone calls, responding. However, that being said, if it is limited only to this particular thing, then probably about $220 would be appropriate for the amount of time that staff would need to spend initially. So, I'm just saying, but I would ask that you specifically insert the new name, and that way, when we bring to you shortly our master fee schedule, we don't start setting two different prices for the comprehensive conditional use permit monitoring. So, staff would offer that in that perspective. Other than the rest of it, we appreciate your struggle, which is why, until there's a little bit more clarity, you're going to see these when they come to you, because there is not clarity yet that we can administratively review. I would offer you probably the point that if we are able to come up with an administrative approach, and it may be a hybrid, and I'm just thinking out of the box here, about a $250 administrative fee to review at the staff level would be appropriate, and then only if we had to bring it to the council would the higher fee be potentially. So, I'm just saying, staff is sensitive to that, and that's something we're working on, because when we can get things more to an over-the-counter permit, it is simpler, and it is less expensive.
So, one question I'll ask you back, Steve, is you said up to a fee for monitoring. Is that what we're talking about here? That is this, are you proposing this be a flat fee of $200 to monitor?
If you look at the language in number seven, sentence number seven, right now, our existing conditional use permit, and staff put this in because that's our standard. So, in number seven, what I would be suggesting is that we actually title this a new, "The applicant shall be required to submit," and then it's going to be in capital, outdoor, capital, "display monitoring fee of," I'm suggesting the 220 range, because that would basically allow for about three hours of staff time and the review and communications, which does not, to me, I think that's real, that, and then we're not having to change. So, we'd be inserting a new fee. You would see that inserted into the master fee schedule. The conditional use monitoring fee that we've now implemented going in our third year would continue to be the $500 indexed by the CPI. So, I think if we're very specific, I would agree, in this particular case, the applicant is not specifically under a conditional use permit. The property is, but not the applicant. So, if we treat this as a very particular case, which it is, because any future folks still have to come and choose to apply and go through the process, I think it is fair to say a brand-new, comprehensive CUP monitoring fee may not be appropriate in this case.
Thank you for that additional information. And there's just that one typo that's in that sentence, "submit" instead of "summit."
I have one more question.
Councilmember Muller?
If the council does agree that balloons are okay, and we haven't decided yet, in item number one, it says the core display of four items. Do balloons count, or should we take out perhaps the word "four items"?
Depends on your resolution that you want to propose.
Okay. Thank you.
As the staff report addresses it, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, balloons were collectively considered one item, I think. Maybe I'm wrong, but the core items, you talked about the four items, the fire engine, the race car, the barrels with the ponies and the chimpanzee, I believe, are the, kind of the signature branded outdoor display items, and then balloons are additional to what the staff report is calling core items, anyway. But it was up for discussion.
I would agree, too, that we'd modify the first one to indicate five items, and that's groupings of items. That's the barrel with the ponies. That would be the balloons. We indicate balloons in number one and delete balloons from the prohibition of number three.
If that's the direction of the council.
Yes.
So, is there any additional discussion?
Well, I did have a--
Councilwoman Dornbecker?
I do, about this application fee. When the store owners applied to have the original user's fee to have the toy store, we did not have that application fee. Is that correct in our statutes?
No, that's incorrect. We've had the deposit. Again, they took a $500 deposit, and that was what was established when the council established the opportunity.
So, they have already paid that?
They have paid the $500 application deposit. If there's any balance due after the processing, and I'm being told there isn't, which does not surprise me for the amount of time we've spent on this item, that, now, that's something, that's already been taken care of. I mean, they've paid the application fee. They knew that.
That really has nothing to do with the use permit that's before us tonight, frankly.
Okay.
Well, it's actually what got them here, because had they not paid that and submitted the application, you wouldn't have the item.
Right. But that was part of their original, that was part of their original--
No.
No, it wasn't.
And the reason is, the use permits at Washington Square predate the monitoring fee, which is three or four years old, but all new use permits that have come before you over the course of that time have a condition that they pay the fee. We have, I believe, over 20 businesses that are subject to that fee. This one just didn't happen to be, because it's operating before that time. And the business is new, but the Washington Square, you know, overarching permit had that.
And I have one more question, and that is, so that the monitoring fee is not going to be delineated in this? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I suggested that I both, what I'm trying to suggest is that if you retitle it to be very specific, which is the outdoor display monitoring fee, I did say 220, council's prerogative, but I do feel that that fee could be reduced, because what we were referring to is we had inserted our normal conditional use permit, broad-scale monitoring fee, and if we're just limiting it to the outdoor display, it does not need--
Because you're not having to review internal--
A whole lot of other stuff. It's a simpler, it's a one item, but the practice going forward would be even people with an existing conditional use permit, if they come forward, because remember, this is an optional program. People can choose to come and request the outdoor display. And, you know, if they don't, they do what they do currently. So, I think that's reasonable, and, you know, that would become the new baseline fee, and we would include the 200 or 220, whatever the council's prerogative is, and that would be a new baseline in our master fee schedule as well. But we would differentiate between the broad conditional use permit monitoring fee and the outdoor display of advertising monitoring fee.
Any other comments from council, or is there proposed action?
Could I just hear everybody's opinion again on box toys? Was that--
I think that the Lego box toys should be allowed.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
I was going to say no.
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable with the box toys.
Okay. And we have four council members. Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Somebody?
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 3089-13, approving a use permit amendment for the exterior display of merchandise at the Madison Street storefront entry and the interior Washington Square entry of the Napa Valley Toy Company, located at 6795 Washington Street. And I'm going to go down here to, everything that's in the resolution, as it is in the staff report, will stand. However, we will add the second storefront entry inside of Washington Square. In item one, we will change that to five items, one of which can include balloons. In item three, we will strike the word balloons. And in item number seven, it shall read, "The applicant shall be required to submit an annual outdoor display monitoring fee to the town in the amount of $220 CPI adjusted annually."
I'll second.
Okay. And any discussion on that motion? I just want to make a point that I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I do so with some hesitation, but I respect the fact that staff is going to be able to work with you guys. I know that you will respect the concerns that have been expressed, not just by me, but by some members of the council, that this not get to the point of, you know, a level of nuisance or even safety. It's not, I don't want to blow it out of proportion, but this is the first time that we've had to deal with this. That's what makes it challenging for the staff and the council. So, I just wanted to make that point of discussion before the vote. But if there's nothing else, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, you do receive your use permit. Thank you, and thank you for, whether you like it or not, being the first ones to bring this forward for the council to discuss.
I'm honored.
It may be a benefit. It may have been more of a challenge because of that, but appreciate you respecting the process and letting us work through it.
Absolutely. I just appreciate everyone's time and efforts that into it.
It's the magic of the balloons. Everyone, three balloons.
Toys!
Thank you. You do have to stay for the rest of the meeting, however. Okay. Onto the next item.
The $10 million item.
Where we, we're broadcasting to our entire community in the world on this capital improvement program workshop.
Just a few quick words before I turn it over to Graham. I want to remind the council that we've taken a strategy of moving our discussion of the CIP to this time period, so that you'll be looking at the overall plan and approaching the five-year, and then the current one-year plan, you will see it inserted into your annual budget when we come forward with adoption of the budget. So, with that premise, what we've attempted to do, this is going to look an awful lot like a lot of the information you've seen before. We're going to focus on what's new and what's changed. There's a few things we've inserted. I really want to acknowledge the work that Graham and his team, Don Moore, Kevin Gaither, and the Public Works, Pound Management Staff, and our, really, Jacob Solis has really taken, and this is an end product, that for the first time, I'm really able and proud to say that this is primarily a town-owned and town-driven product, which was a goal that I've had all along, to get to where we own our CIP. We develop it. I'm very excited about where we're going. I do want to remind everybody that a CIP is mostly a planning document. It's identifying the future infrastructure and capital needs of our community and our organization, much like you saw in some of our folks left. If Washington Park's paving condition deteriorates, as you all know, we have criteria, and we're occasionally moving. The whole goal of Slurry Seal was to try to extend the life, but if it doesn't, then we're going to be revisiting, and we may be back in that neighborhood doing something sooner. So, anyway, with that, I'm pretty excited about where we're going. So, with that, Graham is going to walk you through in a quick-moving PowerPoint presentation about what's included in the CIP. I do want to let everybody know that the full comprehensive CIP is available on the town's website as well.
Thank you. Graham?
Okay. This is our draft capital improvement program, as Steve mentioned. We're looking at one year and five years. So, one year will be in the operating budget, and the five years essentially are planning. So, I want to give you some background, talk about the changes since the last capital improvement program, go over list of projects by categories, talk about balances and deficits, and then ask you to review and discuss this. So, the purpose of this capital improvement program is the planning guide, long-range management tool, leveraging available resources, such as the bonds and financing, and essentially protect, preserve, enhance, extend the life of and improve the town's infrastructure. So, the process we go through on projects, whether they're large or small, is we have the planning, the funding, and the permitting. So, this is the phase where we're talking now about funding. We go out and we get financing, sell bonds, that kind of stuff. Once a project is funded, we go into the design phase. Once a project, if it's small, can go, you know, pretty much into a design-build type situation, or if it's a formal bid, like we did tonight with the Slurry Seal and the ADA sidewalk projects, come to you for approval of the plans, then we go out to bid, then come back with the, after the bid opening, to ask you to award the project. Then during construction, we do the construction management, the inspection, and then we turn it over for operations and maintenance, and start the cycle over again with, for example, the payment management program, where we monitor and do equipment replacements and things like that. The team is made up of, you know, a different, diverse group. We have our town staff. The town council's actually involved, because you're looking at the funding, sewer water rates, do we want to go and pursue grants and things like that. We also have contracted with John Draper through RGS. He's an engineer, and Jacob Solis has been an intern for several years. Pound Management was very involved in the past years with developing the capital improvement program, and now they're part of the implementation of smaller projects, whether it's painting of the post office or ADA upgrades of the restrooms. We also have several consultants, AEC for the recycled water project, now Hopper Creek Improvements. Whitley Burchett has done work for us at the corporation treatment plant. So, we have a number of consultants on different projects, our structural strengthening project, to name a few. If it's a small project, usually capital improvement projects are over $10,000. The town manager has authority up to $25,000 to award those contracts. If it's over that, we come to council. There's a formal bidding process, where we advertise for bids, do a formal opening, and then come to you for the award. Many of these projects are grant-funded or financed, so they have special requirements or special provisions. Caltrans, for example, has myriad of documents and forms to fill out that the contractor has to complete. You're familiar with these categories, civic facilities, community projects, drainage and flood control, and parks and recreation. You'll see these abbreviations on several of the documents. Streets and transportation, water distribution, and wastewater and water reclamation. Some of the changes since we talked last about the capital improvement program was the voters passed Measure T, which is a half-cent sales tax for transportation, which starts in 2018, after the flood protection pass is complete in 2018. Bonds were sold January 15th for the structural strengthening project here at Town Hall, and the work for the sewer and paving on Madison Yount Streets. The town has also entered an MOU for the seed fund program. This is to put solar panels at the Corporation Yard Joint Treatment Plant and at the wastewater pump station to reduce some of our electricity costs. We've also applied for financing with a state revolving fund through the State Water Resources and Control Board for the recycled water expansion project, and that's about $3 million. So, it's been a focus on going out and getting the money. What we want to do is adopt the 2013-14, this coming fiscal year, capital improvement program with the operating budget. We are talking about a five-year CIP, but it's only the first year that's actually funded. We've identified 36 projects and programs with several funding sources, whether it's the general fund, the gas tax, Measure A for flood protection, impact fees from development, grants, or the enterprise funds with water and wastewater. We're looking at a $10 million budget this year. It's broken down by capital projects. The biggest part of that is the structural-- The biggest part of that is the structural strengthening project. Um, we have gas tax projects like Slurry Seals. Uh, water capital fund is for, um, regulator station upgrades mostly. The joint treatment plant, uh, that's the biggest part there is the recycled water project. And then a wastewater capital fund, uh, is like the collection system, uh, influent infiltration, pump station, that sort of thing. So, under civic facilities category, we have the structural strengthening, which is three-point-two-seven million dollars. Design-build contract that should go to construction this summer. The equipment replacement program, um, which is an annual program, about forty-three thousand. Renovate the park restrooms, just received the ADA inspection report today, so we'll look at hiring contractors to do the improvements. And then civic facility renovations, forty-five thousand. That's all our town facilities around, um, Town Hall, Community Hall, Post Office. Structural strength, these are big project this year, so, um, we've had a charrette today, and we'll be moving forward with the design of that project. I'll be coming back to you after the ZDRB meeting for approval as part of the building improvement process. Um, some future projects, the community center trash enclosure, uh, talking to Bardasano about a possible cost share with them. Um, and some projects we put in here and really haven't identified a funding or a year, um, but they're identified. There's a project description, there's a cost estimate, uh, but we essentially say it's unfunded future project. Um, for the electric charging station at the community center, um, there has been information coming out from Metro and Transportation Commission about potential grants. So, if we did get a grant, we'd ask to move forward with this project. Changing to community projects, the accessibility improvements we talked about at Washington Park. Um, when we have the award of this project, we'll probably be asking to move the money from next fiscal year, where it's been identified, into the current fiscal year. Um, the reason for this is to complete the sidewalk work on Washington Street before July. So, July is the next fiscal year, so we'll be asking to move the money forward one fiscal year. Vehicle major equipment replacement, um, this many is starting to build up a fund for our Vector truck, which is about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. So, we're putting a little money in the savings each year for that. Veterans Memorial Park parking lot, um, this may be a project, if we can get funding, um, to move forward with the design and then construction in a future year. We've also started talking with, um, Websoft, and Regis was Rangel Kukumunga, about geographical information system and asset management. So, this would be the first year of moving forward with a system to essentially inventory all of our capital improvements, and then, um, have a maintenance management program. Uh, we've also identified some security needs at the Corporation Yard, Community Hall, um, other locations, and we'll look at about five-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand for that. Um, our tree curb gutter sidewalk project, we're also hoping to complete, uh, before July. Uh, this is a location looking north on Washington near Yount, where the sidewalk could be removed, made wider. Trees would be replaced, have tree grates, just like to the south of this location.
I'll just clarify, the title is wrong on the slide.
Nope, sorry about, forgot to change the name.
That is Washington, north of Mulberry.
Yeah. Um, community projects for the future, we're looking at emergency operations center, uh, possibly at the Community Hall, doing some improvements there instead of the fire station. Um, Slurry Seal, more paths and parking lots in town in the future. More tree curb gutter sidewalk program. And then, um, the utility undergrounding, you know, we've talked about Washington Street, Madison, Yount. You know, some of these streets have been identified, but we just don't have the funding to move forward with those until possibly development comes in. In terms of drainage and flood control, uh, townwide drainage program, we have some bank repair work to do. Um, the stormwater management program, there's a new national pollutant discharge elimination study, um, permit for all municipalities, including, um, agencies in Napa County. So, um, we're having meetings about that to figure out what happens when the new permit comes into place in July. Hopper Creek set removal, we're in the permit application process. We've had several meetings, uh, we're gonna have more meetings with the permit agencies and try to get this, uh, contractor hired for the summer. Uh, the Logio channel bank repair will be part of the Hopper Creek Improvement Project with GHD, Salvant Design. Um, and then the Hopper Creek Design, uh, several projects, uh, that we've identified, and we're now doing the preliminary design for that work. Uh, and this mostly is Measure A funding. Uh, this is Velagio looking towards the bike path from V Marketplace area. So, this is eroding, and we wanna do something there to prevent that. Um, this is Hopper Creek at Oak Circle. Uh, when this backs up, then it goes down Oak Circle. We thought it'd be better to put in a pipe than in the street, so if we can, uh, look at that or another diversion upstream. Uh, Fennel Road will be one of those possible locations, lowering the pedestrian path along Heather between Oak Circle and Mulberry. Uh, stream restoration, um, between Highway twenty-nine and Washington Street. Uh, additional storage upstream of the railroad tracks and Highway twenty-nine. So, these have all been identified in the study. Now, we're gonna do some preliminary design and see, um, how cost-effective it would be to move forward with Measure A money. Uh, diversion Oak Circle, mention that. Um, Washington Street drainage would be, is unfunded, not, we don't think it's eligible for Measure A, but we'll look at, at that. Um, and then also the, with a limited amount of money with Measure A, um, we would, Mulberry may or may not be able to be included in the, in the project, but we'll find more ones to do preliminary design. Um, parks and recreation, uh, we have a park improvement program, equipment replacement program. These are annual, um, park paths program. Um, we're looking at combining the park pass program, the pedestrian path between Oak Circle and Mission, and the, um, path between, um, Oak Circle, I'm sorry, Oak Circle, Mission, and Mission down to the, there's a pedestrian bridge near, um, Champagne. So, we're looking at going out, design for that, and then construction in a future year. Uh, swimming pro- swimming pool, um, this includes funding for replacing equipment like heaters and filters and things like that. Uh, we've also identified some money on our tennis court resurfacing, just for administration. Uh, this is a warranty issue, so we'll be working with the contractor on getting that tennis court repaired. Uh, so this is at Oak Circle, looking southeast of, um, Hopper Creek. It's an open space, looking at, you know, potential, um, trailhead parking or, you know, could be other uses in here, just, it's just not very well utilized. We wanna do something here to make it look a little nicer and park-like. And then the path would go from here at Oak Circle, the upper right, down to Mission, which is lower left, so behind Ad Hawk and the West America Bank along the west side of the creek. And then from Mission, it would go down to the pedestrian bridge near, uh, Hotel Yountville. So, essentially removing, um, this path and replacing it, uh, trying to address the roots and all. Um, park improvement, equipment replacement, um, and then the construction of the park paths, the new park and the pedestrian path from Oak Circle to Mission. Moving over to streets and transportation, uh, this is mostly gas tax, but in the future will be Measure T. Um, pavement management program, just looking at design, um, the Slurry Seal project, we wanna finish that by July as well. Uh, again, asking the town council to pull money forward from a future fiscal year to this current fiscal year. Uh, traffic calming at Humboldt and Yount here in front of Town Hall with new, uh, crosswalks and ADA ramps. Uh, streetlight replacement program, and this, in the capital improvement program project description, you'll see the neighborhoods, the schedule for those replacements, and the costs. Uh, replace failing railroad ties, uh, there's several identified around town that we still like to get replaced with concrete. Uh, North Yountville Bike Project, uh, the bike path with a path through, uh, uh, Yountville Community Park, uh, is in Caltrans at this time, 'cause we wanna make the connection from Weber to Highway twenty-nine. So, we need encroachment permit, we also need our funding, so, um, they said they would get to that next week, so. A survey and monument book is something we'd like to pull forward. This came up with the Napa Lodge and the, um, R and D Kitchen Project with monumentation and lot line adjustments and records of surveys. So, we'd like to get some more, uh, control of our, uh, monuments in town, so surveyors have that information. And then the bonds were also sold for the Madison Yount resurfacing project. It's broken into two locations, one for the street portion and one for the wastewater sewer portions. So, you'll see that in the next, uh, few slides. So, this is one of those curbs on Washington, west side of Washington, north of Humboldt, towards Weber. It'd be nice to, um, get this replaced with concrete and also replace the path and the streetlights. This is at Yountville Community Park, looking, Washington is on the le- street's on the left and the park is on the right. So, the con- new concrete path would go between the trees, along the drainage, uh, to the restrooms.
So, Graham, real quick, if I can interrupt, can you go back, uh, to that path? Is that, that's public?
Which path?
That one you just had, uh, just before that slide.
Oh, the, this is, uh,
Sidewalk public?
In the town right-of-way.
It is. Okay. Further down the street, it's not?
It varies, it's, it is on the right-of-way along Washington Street, it's the old highway, but it doesn't quite match, you know, when you look at some of the properties.
So, the, the part of that same, uh, sidewalk that goes, uh, adjacent to the parking lot,
At V Marketplace?
V Marketplace is, is private.
There's, yeah, because it's, it sort of meanders to the south, there's a landscape area between. So, much of that asphalt path is on private property. Um, but then it meanders back into the public right-of-way, and then when you get to Whistlestop, it's all within the public right-of-way.
Okay, thanks.
So, it does vary back and forth. Uh, but we do look at that, and sometimes we get, we request easements. Uh, payment management program, we'll be looking at, uh, because of Measure T not going into effect until twenty-eighteen, you know, moving at our, um, you know, overlays to the future. Uh, Slurry Seals, still recommend doing projects in the meantime, 'cause it is cost-effective. Um, that'll be up to the council. And then traffic calming is another program, which would be eligible for funding for Measure T. Streetlight replacement, um, there's some lights that, you know, we wanna wait the eight years for the retrofit, um, but there's some lights that we'd like to remove, PGE lights and put in town standard lights. Uh, railroad tie curbs we talked about, uh, traffic circulation plan. Um, this is related to the general plan, um, requirements. Um, so we'd like to get, end an update from the old study to, um, look at accessibility and circulation. Uh, barrier, barrier replacements, uh, these are on, um, hot, over Hopper Creek at Washington, Jefferson, and Yount. They do not meet current standards, uh, so we'd like to upgrade those. It is eligible for Measure T, but we're identifying a lot of things that are measure eligible, but not, you know, the money only goes so far. Sidewalks on South Washington Street, it's been identified, but it's an unfunded project. Could wait for development to come in and do that work. Uh, and then regrading and repaving Web- Weber west of Washington. Uh, and that, again, we believe could be required as a condition of approval for development of that property. So, we're not recommending, uh, funding for that at this time. Uh, in terms of water, um, we have a water meter and transmitter replacement program. Uh, we're looking at, we've replaced about half the meters in town. We're looking at replacing meter boxes, so it's easier to read, uh, remotely read the, the meters. Uh, the main and lateral replacement program, not, just not much money there, just to, um, start building that up. Hydrid flushing program, this is, since it's taking the balance we have in the current budget and rolling it to the next year. Um, we have a proposal, uh, but we haven't moved forward on that one. We're looking at what's happening with the transmission line, if there's still sand there, before we start cleaning the distribution system. Pressure regulator station upgrades, again, pulling the balance forward. Um, we've talked to a couple contractors, and we're gonna get some bids to, to do those upgrades. Uh, lock sampling enclosures, this was something that came up with the California Department of Public Health. Uh, we do sampling at homes and a hose bib, and what we like to do is protect those from contamination, so it don't get false readings. Uh, this is one of the regulator stations, um, hasn't been looked at in a few years, so we wanted to check to make sure everything is both up to code and working properly. Um, future, we look at fire flow study, um, groundwater management plan update, and then a fixed network, uh, meter reading. Um, what this would do is set up, um, stations to receive the water meter data hourly, so people could look at their water usage at two in the morning, see if they have a leak. Um, we could also see, you know, the water uses over the, the day, the month, the time of year, season. So, we think that could be helpful in the future. Um, in terms of wastewater and recycled water, water reclamation, we have the joint treatment plant, um, equipment replacement program. We've have an inventory, and we're looking at, you know, what do we need to replace over time. Uh, the recycled water project is, um, the largest. As I mentioned, we've applied for a state loan, um, with two-point-six percent financing, I think. Uh, so that should be coming soon. We're just finishing up the environmental documents and the, um, we met with the, uh, customers and potential customers of recycled water. Um, we have one more meeting, and then we've asked them to give us a letter of intent. We'll submit that with the financing application, that should be, uh, should be complete here fairly quickly, and should have some, some news for you in the next month or so. Um, the other one is, as part of the recycled water project, we're putting in a SCADA system for remotely monitoring the ponds and the, uh, valves and, and all. And so, we thought it would also be good to do this with the pump station, the well, and other infrastructure, where we can also remotely monitor those. Uh, the influent infiltration reduction program, we're looking at essentially assessing our existing sewer collection system that was built in nineteen fifty-six, and what are the highest priority areas to either do spot repairs or cut and cover. Uh, the main and lateral replacement program, this is the one at Madison and Yount, so this would be the sewer portion. So, the wastewater fund would put money into the Yount-Madison project, um, for its share, for those sewer costs, instead of the general fund. Uh, pump station equipment replacement program, again, we've identified equipment and a replacement schedule for that. Uh, recycled water project, uh, future projects, joint treatment plant, equipment replacement program, you know, annual funding and replacement. Um, we're looking at dredging the wastewater ponds. Um, they, don't think they've been, care, several decades, um, so we get more capacity there. And then, um, looking at the digester, we talked about methane capture tonight, and, um, this, the, the, the digester was built in nineteen thirty-nine, so it's been renovated a few times, but, uh, we thought it might be good to see, are there other things we can do to make it more efficient? Um, is it most effective? Um, you know, it's working, but could it work better? Uh, influent infiltration, again, is the annual, and then I mentioned a SCADA system. So, what it did was went through each category and looked at the, the expenses for the five years, and then the current funding for the current year that we're in, and then the next fiscal year. So, essentially, when we do the fiscal year, um, thirteen-fourteen, we'd have one year of funding, um, and then looked at the balance. So, there, I did not include the unfunded projects in these, um, but I am sort of doing some projections of, you know, for example, in the past, over the last four or five years, the council's transferred, uh, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the general fund into the capital project fund. Um, mostly that's been going to streets, um, but it is, you know, a, a significant funding source for the capital improvement program. Um, also with this, as opposed to last year, when I showed you this slide, we've had the bond sales. So, now there is the revenue there that, um, to cover, so there's less, uh, less of a deficit in this, um, fund this year. Community projects, um, essentially these are, uh, projects, again, that do not include the unfunded projects, and, um, when I'll, I'll have a summary of the three, um, general fund projects, uh, it shows you the total. Drainage and flood control, this is the Measure A money. We're anticipating about two million dollars of sales tax revenue through twenty-eighteen. Um, it's difficult to judge, you know, sales tax goes up and down, mostly up, but, um, we've also identified the projects in the study, about one-point-eight million dollars. Uh, but there are other projects with, uh, watershed assessment district funding that we can look at. Um, unfortunately, we can't use watershed assessment district money for capital projects like pipes. Um, and the Measure A money, you know, has a certain areas that need to, um, it's restricted. Um, parks and recreation, we're looking at expenses of about nine-hundred-thousand dollars. Current funding was two-hundred-and-twenty, so this is where we'd be asking for some of the general fund, funding to go into the capital projects fund. So, rolling those up, except for drainage and flood control, we'd have about five-point-eight million dollars of expenses over the next five years. Uh, current funding is four-point-two. Um, if the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars continued for four years, about two-point-six million dollars. So, we would be essentially okay in terms of one-million-dollar balance. So, um, we can obviously look at those, those numbers as it goes year by year. It used to be the council would just roll over any money that was left over at the end of the year into the capital projects fund, but, um, we're trying to take a little closer look at this and sharpen our pencils. Uh, streets and transportation is mostly from gas tax. Um, in the future, we look at Measure T. Um, the maintenance, payment management program identified, you know, three-hundred to six-hundred-thousand dollars of need that we should be funding our payment management program. Uh, we're talking about, uh, delaying it a bit until the Measure T funding becomes available. Um, that would, you know, we only get, collect about ninety-thousand dollars a year from gas tax, 'cause we're such a small community. Um, so it really doesn't go very far, and so, again, the general fund has been making a major contribution to street maintenance, which is why the town has the high, highest, well, right now we're tied, but probably next year will be the highest payment management, payment condition index in the county, um, 'cause the town has made the investment. Uh, water distribution, this fund is in a deficit, as you know, from the water and wastewater study and the rates, um, but it is starting to come back, and it's anticipated that it would be in the black at the end of the five years of the rate increases. Um, there are obviously needs from old pipelines needing to be replaced, um, that exceed the, the, the funding available. Um, the current revenue estimated is about forty-thousand dollars. The current revenue estimated is about $40,000 per year from the water fund, equipment, or the replacement fund. So, it is getting better. We've been limiting the amount of work we do. It has, you know, we've had the leak on Landy and so hopefully we won't have too many more of those things. But this is, you know, we're assessing the system and trying to stay ahead of the, you know, these costs of leaks. In terms of wastewater, the big one is recycled water project. Our current funding, assuming we get the loan from the state, would, you know, put us in a deficit of about 370,000 for the, on the treatment side. And we've been getting about, we anticipate about $100,000 a year of revenue from the new sewer rates. So, again, trying to get into the black after the five years of rate increases. In terms of wastewater on the collection side, wastewater divided up into the treatment and the collection. Again, we're in a deficit in this situation and looking at, you know, lots of pipes that were built in 196, 1956 and trying to fix those as cost-effectively as we can. But again, it is a deficit in that situation. So, in conclusion, since the last year, the town has been aggressive in pursuing bonds and grants and loans to fund these projects. We are still in deficits for streets, water, and wastewater. But this is a five-year plan to try to identify those funding needs and those potential expenses and to get your input on prioritization of those, those projects and are we heading in the right direction with what we're proposing. Coming back in, what we're gonna do is with the operating budget, talk about the capital improvement program, adopting that one-year capital improvement program and then finding that the plan is consistent with the general plan. This is a requirement of the state. Most of these projects are renovating, equipment replacement, paving streets, that type of thing. So, we believe it is compliant or consistent, so it'll be a resolution for that, to find it consistent with the general plan. So, with that, we take any public comments or review and discuss the five-year capital improvement program.
I think it's safe to say we can skip the public input portion unless somebody comes in. So, specific questions about the report, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I wanted to talk specifically about, public might still be out in TV land there. The PK 4011. Now, that is a small piece of what you would like to do, the bigger one. So, just so the council knows, there's a path that's gonna be planned from Oak Circle behind Ad hoc and is going to meet up with the current path that's at Mission that goes over Hopper Creek behind Hotel Yountville. So, and that all makes sense to put it together as one. However, there's a small section from Mission to the Hopper Creek Bridge. Past Hopper Creek on down seems fine and it's, seems like it's sunken, the tree roots are coming up. There's yellow-orange cones there, there's a lot of orange, I mean, the sidewalk is often the path, often used by Rancho Genapa residents to get to Gateway and vice versa. Is there any way we could move that piece up or is it just not feasible to take that piece out of the whole project? It's really...
No, I think what I would say is staff can work on that. And again, what we're trying to do right now, we've modeled a strategy for this project to be a broader project so that we can compete for state park grant funding.
Right.
And what I will suggest to you is that this particular project is actually a good one to talk about because this is where we talk about the planning document and getting all the segments. Staff is very well aware that that section is failing and we may need to get there sooner than the whole grant process. So, this does not preclude us from doing that. And in fact, what I would say, we look at elements and if that's a priority of the council, then that's something we can look at. I will share, we do have a concern about keeping it open in its current condition. And it has reached a point. So, much like we've moved some other path projects up that could be done in a segment the same way, other elements could be done in a segment based on either grant approval or funding.
Because that's what I was gonna suggest. I mean, it really has deteriorated so much that, you know, we spent a long time talking about our ADA issues. I mean, this is, we either need to fix it or really consider closing it. A few red cones were all, it's really bad.
Yeah. One thing that comes to mind is we have precision concrete coming into town to do some sidewalk cutting. So, that might be something, it's kind of tough with asphalt concrete. But what this also is, is a work plan, so it essentially says, you know, these are the projects we have planned for design and construction. We go out and do an RFP and we do try to do economies of scale where we try to hire consultants who do similar work for whether it's Hopper Creek improvements or the recycled water project. And then we try to group all our paving projects together and all our pipeline projects together because those are similar contractors. So, if, if it's, you know, we can't wait for two years or so to get to construction of that path, then we can either break it out and do a separate project, which wouldn't be quite as efficient. But, you know, if we're reducing our potential liability, trip and fall and stuff like that, that's, you know, something we can look at.
We've done that before. We just did it, was it two years ago in Veterans Memorial Park?
And...
Where we sped up the schedule on that because it was failing faster than anticipated. So, we can certainly respond as needed in some cases.
It's just, you know, the other thing, when you look at the 36 projects with the structural strengthening and Hopper Creek and the paving, we have a lot of projects and we brought in John Draper with our GS consultants to help get these projects out the door. But we do have limited resources and part of this plan is to figure out, okay, what are our priority projects that we're trying to get to first and foremost?
I have a question.
Yes, please. Would the watershed money available be able to be used for, for example, that, that pathway and also, you know, fixing off Hopper Creek along there?
I'm trying to think. So, there's two watershed, there's watershed assessment district, which is mostly used for the Hopper Creek center removal.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's more, that's mostly, but it has several things you can spend it on. Park paths would be sort of a stretch. We'd have to talk to the flood control district if that would be, you know, something we could spend, where we could spend it.
I see.
Measure A, we're looking at the path along Heather where we'd actually lower the path so we have more cross-sectional area for the water to move through there, so we feel that's eligible. So, we get the path replaced, but it would be part of a larger drainage project. So, that would be Measure A. Measure A is mostly just more conveyance of the water to get it through town with new pipes or bridges or things like that. So, the path there at the flood wall between Mission and Champagne would be, again, a stretch unless somehow we made it into a drainage feature, which doesn't work really well in a flood. So, go walking on the path. And then we gotta clean the path off and, you know, it becomes a maintenance issue, too.
Can you tell me more about the photo, townwide photovoltaic system?
The town has, I think this has been in the CIP for quite a few years, has looked at programs where, you know, should we put, and the town did put solar panels on top of community hall and community center as part of the community center project. So, should we put them on the post office and town hall? And then there, you even stretch it to say, does a town want to participate in a program with private property owners or businesses to facilitate their, you know, installation of solar panels? It's, again, shown as unfunded future. We have identified the two projects at the, we did a feasibility study as part of the seed program at the pump station and the joint treatment plant. And so, those look cost-effective, feasible, and we should be coming back to the town council with a request proposal in the near future to go out and hire a contractor to design and build those projects. But other projects just have not met the benefit to cost ratio yet.
One challenge we face right now on a broader solar is while we actually sit in an environment that would be pretty productive, the current regulatory climate does not allow us to aggregate meters. So, right now, when we do our cost-benefit analysis, we're forced to look at where it comes back to the meter located on that site. So, for example, if we were to put an array someplace and try to fund all of the streetlights and town hall and stuff like that, they won't let us. So, we're forced right now to look at what specifically comes off the site, back onto the site, which is why a broader approach has not been successful. There have been a couple forays into, for the public sector, aggregate metering. If that was to change, it might make more sense. Right now, we are proceeding with more of the evaluation and potential movement forward with the, as Graham mentioned, the wastewater treatment plant and the pump station. The good news for us is those are actually our two biggest electrical consumption. Then, streetlights would probably be next, even though we've really reduced that by going to LED in most neighborhoods except for those lights that are still owned and maintained by PG&E, which are the oldest and least energy-efficient in town.
I do believe there was legislation proposed last year, and I want to say it was Senator Walke.
It was and it did not get out of, did not get out of committee.
So, it may be in play again in this next year. We'll have to wait and monitor that.
And then we will reevaluate it.
I have a one more question.
Yeah, well, did you have any question? Councilmember Mueller and then the Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was gonna ask one more question about, and we'll hear lots about this, I'm sure, in the, in May with the budget. But, so, let me know if I've got the numbers right. So, you are, your assumption is going to be that there will be $650,000 left over every year for four years. And if that is the case, we're still a million dollars short of the...
No, we're a million dollars ahead.
We're a million dollars ahead.
So, we have about, we would, so, there would be a million dollars of additional funding for other projects. It'd be like the fund balance.
Right.
So...
So, that would be a fund balance.
Correct.
So, if we put 650 a year, that'd be based on our excess. So, now my question, are we going, are you going to, when it comes to the budget, still plan on that? Or are you going to actually earmark a certain amount?
Let me try and help. Graham is trying to give you a visual presentation of what the moving target and our effort at some fiscal. I will pretty much guarantee you that his four-year numbers and the revenues will not match just because there's other moving factors, not because of the numbers. But to your answer, we are trying to get tighter and that's why Graham and Kathleen are, are working on these projections. You've asked us to do a, a projection. We need to really factor in Measure T and where we move and prioritize. And again, he's showing you all of these projects and our current snapshot of what we think's going to be available. In some areas, we show a deficit. In some areas, we're ahead. So, part of that, you still have some decisions to make on each of those going-forward years. For example, I'm gonna hypothesize that you won't quite have 650 because we're going to take some debt service out, but you're still gonna be putting a very significant 400 to 500,000 a year potentially into your allocation. Measure T is really going to allow us, in that time period, to, to start fully funding the streets and transportation and have less dependence on the capital projects fund. So, we've got some moving pieces that we need to be doing. Frankly, we want to, you know, this is our efforts to start really fine-tuning and giving you an idea that, okay, this looks really big, but some of this is doable, some of this, we still have some, some things to work out and tighten up. So, that's the framework that, that I think we need to look at it. And we will have a tighter presentation as we get to the adoption of the annual budget because there you will see your debt service incorporated. But mind you also, that the debt service is taking care of that 3.2 million dollar and 4.2, excuse me, yeah, 3.2 and 1.3 million dollar project. So, it's, it's within that structure.
Thank you. And I would just also add, we do want to identify more specifically how much we'd like to put into the capital improvement program instead of just taking what's left over at the end of the fiscal year and putting it...
Exactly my question.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to be more strategic with that.
Right. And then the other one is to, you know, water and wastewater rates will be coming up again in a couple of years. Look at the, at the rates every five years. So, the capital improvement program identifies the need because the first question our rate consultant asks us is, what are your capital improvement program needs? And so, this cap, by having the capital improvement program, the replacement program, ident, doing the assessments, we can identify what our needs are for the next five years and that would help the council make a decision on, do rates need to go up a little bit or a lot, or do we need to defer with more projects or things like that?
Okay.
Thanks. Vice Mayor, questions or comments?
Both. Well, I'll start with questions. I'll certainly have questions. I'm working with my notes here, going through, I legislate, so. I, just, I guess a question, either you or Kathleen, either one. Looking at the, this spreadsheet, there's a couple of inconsistencies in the way you've put in, like the CF 0001, which is the strengthening, structural strengthening project, thank you. It shows the fund balance, but it doesn't show us spending it next year. And then when you go down to Madison and Yount, it shows that is unfunded. So, I just think when we get to the budget, if we can, I assume we'll take a look at some of those inconsistencies.
Sure. One of the things that we do is look at the fund balance, which is the current fiscal year, and then roll that over in what's not spent into the fiscal year 13, 14, or the next fiscal year. So, essentially, the budget we'd be requesting with the operating budget would be those first two columns, balance and 13, 14. So, adding those together would be what we'd be requesting in the budget.
So, we probably have 3.27 million should be in that column at 13, 14 because we're gonna spend that.
We will. We're spending some of it this year.
Okay.
So, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, Graham will, and I'll sit down and make a projection of what amount needs to roll into 13, 14.
Okay. Another question I had, so that was the same, if you scroll down to ST 0009, same kind of issue there. You really addressed, so thank you, at the end of your presentation, your, your projections with the capital project funds. Because I made a, I made a note that the capital project fund at the end of this year is gonna end approximately 1.1 million dollars. And I think if you take that 650 and say, we're gonna end up where we are today, that's what we need to have. And if we only put in 400, we're falling behind. Or something has to fall off or change in here. So, I thought that was, that was really good. You did say we're gonna spend about $10 million and you go to the very bottom of this and it says 4.7. I think some of that has to do with that.
Again, yeah, you combine the balance and the next fiscal year. If you add the 5.4 and the 4.7.
Yeah. Okay, and that's assuming we're spending it. Okay. And I'll take the liberty of making, well, do you want to have comments yet or not?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
It's more of a workshop than...
First of all, I really like that we're doing this now because I feel like we keep doing it every, every four months and then we do it after the budget and it doesn't make sense and we're redoing it. So, this makes total sense and I, I look at this a little bit as a draft, but it means we don't have to spend a lot of time on it at the budget time and you know how to plug these in. So, that's good. And you talked about the, the issue with projecting out, but you've done a projection out and at least it gives us a yardstick to know we're ahead, we're behind, or it's unreasonable. And that's tremendously useful information. So, I was really glad you covered that at the end. And the only other comment I wanted to make had to do with the streets because if we went to that streets, there was, there was a reasonable deficit. That slide you made that showed the funding piece of it, you don't have to show it.
Okay.
But we talked about that our main source is the gas tax. And I very much believe that we have Measure T coming and I think we can consider ourselves very fortunate that that's probably gonna provide all the funding we need. But in the meantime, we don't want to fall behind so it costs us more money in the long term.
Correct.
And ultimately, to me, it is an appropriate use of general fund revenue to keep our streets. I mean, it's a basic functioning of government. When you think of the TOT, which is the main, TOT and property tax on hotels, that's the main impact of all these people in town. To act like we should not use that for the streets they're driving on, I think it is appropriate to have general fund support for that. And I, I think we need to make sure in the next five years, before T kicks in, that we are doing what we need to do. Because if not, we're pushing some liability off like we've done with Madison and Yount.
Correct.
So, that was my comment and sort of philosophical request of you.
That's what the county does, that's...
That's what, yes, that's what the county does.
So, I'm just gonna address three things you have in your list of large projects in your staff report. The first one, number two, actually, your tree curb gutter sidewalk replacement. I really meant this highlight as much for the Vice Mayor as for staff about the replacement of the gas lamp, streetlights with the new town standards on Washington from Humboldt to Weber.
You mean the old hideous ones?
That's your definition, interpretation. But two other on this list I wanted to comment and ask about. Number three, the Veterans Memorial Park parking improvement project. It talks about if external funding or private, public-private financing can be arranged. Are conversations still ongoing about that? I know that we've talked about...
Yes.
And are they progressing to keep this in 1415?
Yes, and I will also...
Not prior to that, though. Not likely prior to that.
Well, I think they can continue where they're at. Also, I will remind you, we are finally successfully received 150,000 from NCTPA from the sale of our lot. So, based on council prior direction, you will see that, and that will need to be allocated to the capital projects fund as well. But that was not part of the mid-year budget, because we hadn't, actually, I think the check came the day that the presentation was made. So, we had originally...
Where was the big check?
It wasn't a giant check.
There was a whole other number.
It was a check so small it got lost in the mail at one point.
But what I will, what I would share is, you know, there had been previous discussion that we might use that sale to pay for the lot improvements. We believe at this point it's prudent to start assuming we can design it, and then hopefully, we will have an external funding source that potentially, we'll see. But I do think that's in play.
Okay. And then the last one, number five, the Hopper Creek Improvement Project, is I remember in the presentations about this multi-phased plan, we're talking here about five of the recommendations. If I remember correctly, we're basically starting at the north end of the phases and working down piece by piece to see, and maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but...
That's right.
The ones toward the bottom end, toward the south end, we are going to determine whether they're still necessary as we see the improvements take effect at the early stages.
Actually, we're going to do that as part of the modeling and part of the preliminary design. So, instead of building things from top to bottom, we're actually going to look at all, how they all work together in combination, and then mix it up with, you know, if you take this one out, how, what's, so, essentially find what's the most cost-effective grouping of projects, and then come forward with the design of those projects. So, Mulberry Street may not be as effective as Oak Circle or the diversion or upstream of Highway 29.
So, how are you determining which of the five recommendations that are the 450,000 here?
Well, they're looking at six or seven.
Right.
And they're going to run them through the model and see what happens with the floodwaters if you do one, two, five, or other combinations of those projects together. And once we figure out what are the most cost-effective projects, then that would be put into the design. So, we may go to bid with three of the six or seven projects.
Okay. So, you're, this is just kind of a best guess at this point, prior to that modeling?
Right.
Okay.
And so, then, once we do the design, then we need to go get the permits and the environmental document, just like with the recycled water project. So, it'll be similar process and similar timing. Hopefully, it'll be faster than recycled water project, because we don't have the federal funding.
Right. Okay. Good. Any other last questions or comments? I would echo the Vice Mayor's comments about the timeliness of this. I know we have some scheduling challenges coming up later this spring and summer, so it's really important that we knock out as much of this in the first 20 budget workshops we have.
We appreciate your attention and focus. What you'll see is, we'll put a consent calendar item for the approval of the CIP as a master planning document, the five-year planning document on the next council, and then we will work on the refinement as consistent with this for the annual budget. And we will take to heart, looking at the PK 4011, to see where and if. And I do think the fund balance may be sufficient if we really feel we need to work that. Staff's very aware of that one.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 11, transient occupancy tax audit informational report. Is there a...
Yes.
Report?
A brief update verbally. The TOT audit has been completed for calendar years 2009, 2010, 2011, and the results have been sent out to each property for their part of the audit. And as with any audit, it's done to ensure accuracy in calculation and payment of tax and compliance with our municipal code. And the audit's not intended to be punitive, but it is the town's professional and fiduciary responsibility to ensure the tax is reported and collected appropriately. So, with that being said, we did have a handful of findings, and the parties involved have been notified, and we've requested payment of those findings by March 1st. And we also, our auditor takes the opportunity to educate when they see maybe just a misinterpretation or misunderstanding of the code, or maybe some consistent misunderstanding by operators. And so, they took the opportunity to do some education and outreach and let me know about that. So, that helps with the communication back out to the hotels. And really, that's it. There were no big surprises. I think the errors that were found were really mistakes that were made and can be easily corrected moving forward. This audit did include two new properties that were not included in the last three-year audit, and that would be North Block Hotel and Bardessano Hotel. So, it was a good process, and we're happy to have it done, and we're moving forward. And in a couple of years, we'll be repeating our three-year audit cycle.
So, all the expanded rooms at Hotel Yountville had already been factored in prior to that?
Well, no, but the hotel had undergone the audit process previously. Just now, there's more revenue to audit, if you will.
That's good. Any questions about that, Vice Mayor?
My question, you, you mentioned that the auditor would look at trends. Were there any trends, or was it just isolated issues?
Mostly isolated issues.
I guess I asked that in the question, is there anything we need to do on the town side to help clarify, or...
I don't think so. I did send out information about, we don't get many requests for exemption of TOT tax, but there is a provision, and there's some little obscure government codes that can apply. And just making sure that operators know there is a specific form that they need to fill out in advance and get that approved in advance. And most know that. And like I said, it's, it's pretty rare that we get requests, but they do come occasionally. And some operators, you know, had said they didn't know it. And then also, we had, after our last audit, we had worked with our town attorney's office about our gift cards and outstanding unredeemed gift cards or gift certificates. So, still some clarification on that, but I think everybody is understanding that and wanting to make sure they're in compliance. So, all in all, I think it was a, it was a very good audit. I do think, I mean, there's always the risk with three years, because if something's going wrong, it's going wrong for longer than the two years. But I think the feedback I've gotten from the hotels is, they appreciate the three years, because it's, you know, a burden on them to deal with it. They know they have to keep the records, and, and they comply with it. And they're, they're very, we're fortunate, because we have some great business people who run our hotels very successfully. So, they're usually right on top of things.
Thank you.
Any questions about the, no? Okay, we'll move on.
I have my one item, just to let people know that the underwriting work for the Heston Project, taking the wires down in front of Vander Park in Washington, has started. They got rained out today, but they should be back as soon as it's dry enough to start trenching and installing those conduits. And then the utilities will come back later and put the wires into the conduits underground and take down the poles and wires. So, the first part with the contractor should go quickly. The second part with utilities will probably go more slowly.
And do we have a projection on the completion at the Hurley's extent, expansion, extension?
2013.
2013? Yeah, 2013. Okay. We'll leave that one there.
Give or take.
Meeting, council meeting reports. We've not had a flood control meeting since. We do have an NCTPA meeting tomorrow. Before that, there will be the ribbon cutting at the new transit center. So, they're formally opening the new transit center in downtown Napa. Do we have an Upper Valley Waste Management Authority meeting report?
Yes, we do. We have received $25,000 of state payment for the Cal recycle program. So, that money is available. So, I've already put our town manager in touch with Upper Valley Waste Management. No one else ever seems to go after it. They did mention that Yountville uses all their money, so perhaps we can help them use all this money, too. So, we're, Steve's already looking at several things that we can use for that. Also, as everyone remembers, we added, the last rate cycle review, a $1 per ton surcharge for any ton of garbage that goes to Clover Flat. That money is then used for hazardous household waste events. So, the last one was in October in Calistoga. So, we're going to move it down to this end of the valley in October. It'll be at the Rutherford Grove Winery off of 29. So, that'll be coming up. And we've been putting a lot of effort into recycle, or making sure that people know not to put needles and syringes in the garbage or the recycling. And that's so far that we're seeing improvements there. And we're seeing a lot more needles going to the clinical lays. So, and Napa Can Do is the one who picks all that up and takes it wherever they take it. So, we're going to give them a proclamation the next time we meet for thanking them for doing that.
Thank you. There is a meeting, I think several of us are attending Thursday downtown Napa, which is the League of California Cities North Bay Division meeting. And we will be listening to a panel discussion on local revenue and self-sufficiency. So, looking forward to learning some things that we can apply here, or sharing some of our good news with everyone else. Even better. Any other comments from councilmembers? With that, we'll move right ahead. We'll see the list of future agenda items. American Red Cross Month coming up in March. We will have budget workshop. You should leave that number one off there. That's, that's like a 1A, I think. Cheating a little bit.
When will that happen?
Greenhouse gas emissions inventory review and check presentation? No.
I wish.
Do we have need for closed session tonight?
We would like to brief the town council briefly on the Yountville versus Swank matter.
Any reportable action expected?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let me click back to our agenda here. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn to our next regular council meeting, which is Tuesday, March 5th at 6:00 PM.